While this meeting of the Town Council for November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty to order, if you would please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands in, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Let me see if I can figure out where we're going here. Announcements. By way of announcements, the town offices will be closed on Thursday, November twenty-sixth, and Friday, November twenty-seventh, in observance of Thanksgiving. The Merrimack Transfer Station will be closed on Thanksgiving Day and will be open normal hours on Friday and Saturday from eight AM to four PM. Upcoming Town Council meetings, the Town Council meets on the first and third Thursdays in the months of November and December. So our next meeting is Thursday, December third at seven PM here in this room. It's a regular meeting and the following regular meeting would be Thursday, December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty, at seven PM. Paul, did you have any other announcements?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Friends of the Merrimack Public Library are sponsoring a holiday virtual auction on the library's Facebook page. Bid on your favorites until November twenty-fourth. We continue to offer, the library will continue to offer curbside pickup of materials, which is both contactless and convenient. Contact the library for more information. Tax bills were picked up by the mailing company on Wednesday morning, yesterday. The bills will be in the mail on Monday, November twenty-third, and will be due on Monday, December twenty-eighth. At this time, I'd like to tell the community that the tax rate went down seven cents to two dollars, uh, two dollars, twenty-four dollars and six cents. That's twenty-four dollars and six cents. So the overall tax bill decreased seven cents from last year to this year. The Town of Merrimack Food Drive is underway. Non-perishable food items and goods can be dropped off at our collection locations at the highway garage, police department, library, and town hall, upper and lower levels, and the transfer station. We will be accepting items to donate to local food pantries until December thirty-first. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. At this point, I want to point out that Eileen Cabanel is excused from the meeting, along with Nancy Harrington and Peter Albert, who are both out of town, out of state. So they're not going to be joining us tonight, but we do have five with us. Comments from the press and public. At this point, if you have anything you'd like to address the council with specifically prior to the meeting, come on up.
Where's the microphone?
Where's the microphone? You can come up to the chair, to the seat here. Please be sure to give us your name and address and let us know what's on your mind.
My name is Paul Goodrich. I reside at sixty-eight Wire Road in Merrimack.
Okay, thanks.
You ready?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council, I'm here this evening to address two different subjects for you. And we'll provide a copy of this document at the end of my presentation.
Thank you.
The first one, the subject deals with what I call the Gold Project. This is the, relates to the gold award received by the young lady, that's a girl scout. She presented a, at your meeting for stands, and at the end of the meeting, she had a kind of a problem deciding if she was going to go with cedar or a granite post. I'm here this evening to offer a more permanent solution to her problems. I'm willing to pay for it, five granite posts that will provide a durable stand for her to mount the cameras.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Each stand will be a seven-by-seven granite post, seven feet long, from the Swenson Granite Works in Amherst, at a cost of a hundred and eighty-five dollars each. There may be a need for extra grinding to make sure that it's a top flat service, and I'm willing to pay for that additional, and I'm willing to pay up to two hundred dollars per post for her project. My phone number is at the end of this presentation. You can pass that on to her, and she can contact me, and we will make arrangements with Swanson to get those posts prepared for her project.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
That is incredibly generous, Mr. Goodrich. Thank you so much. We'll make, Paul, are we gonna make sure that we put Mr. Goodrich in touch with the young girl? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Before I start the second topic, for your information, I would like to review my contribution to the first Merrimack Town Park. In April nineteen sixty-eight, Richard Belleville and I met with Harold Thasher to get permission to build a ball field at Twin Bridges. On April twenty-seventh, Mr. Belleville arranged for a work party and all-in-all of the dirt necessary to build that park, that ball field. It was a beautiful Saturday, beautiful spring day. We completed the work early afternoon, and we retired to Frank Lander's service station for refreshments. You know what the refreshments were around. Unfortunately, there was a second event that day, late in the afternoon. The Merrimack firemen were called out to stop the fire at Turkey Hill Bridge. And it was well underway by the time we arrived. Yes, I was one of those firemen. It was sad to see a landmark like that destroyed on the same day that we added a beautiful new park. The Twin Bridges has become a multiple-use facility with its playground and basketball hopes. The building donated by Dana Patterson for a relief center has been well-used over many years. I take personal pride in my contribution to what was started fifty years ago. Tonight, I want to offer some suggestions that might be used to enhance our community parks. These suggestions are based on my personal experience from other towns where I lived. Jasper, Alabama, has nine neighborhood parks. Each of these parks has a defined set of features that provide a unique focus. Two of these parks are intended as walking trails for its citizens. One trail in each park circles the park perimeter and is about a half-mile in length. Shorter trails wind through each park to connect with this perimeter. One of these walking parks has a small stream that meanders through the park with trails on either side. A second walking park was used to plant a variety of trees, suggested by the local garden club. Stakes are provided to identify each tree. A couple of benches were provided as potential rest areas for the older citizens. A small playground was included in each of these two parks. Parking areas were adjacent to a trail for convenient access. A frisbee golf course was provided within one park. Ball fields were the primary focus of a third park, which also included tennis courts. An aquatic center occupied a fourth park. Picnic pavilions were provided for the rent of these parks. I envision Watson Park could be a walking park. Could be the focal point to connect to other trails like the Sauhigan Trail that you're talking about. These would be paved trails that accommodate walkers, runners, inline skaters, and possibly skateboards, as well as dogs on a leash. Trees and memorial benches could be included as enhancements to its character. Memorial benches would provide resting locations for our more senior walkers, and those with a handicap. A variety of trees could be planted or gationed to these trails with markers to identify each type of tree. Merrimack should consider joining Tree City USA, which is a national organization since nineteen seventy that promotes urban forestry management. A frisbee golf course might be considered based on the public's interest. Pickleball courts or horseshoes are other possible activities. Two or three pavilions could be added for picnic areas. In Geneva, Illinois, my house was adjacent to the Fox River, Fox River Trail. This is a five-and-a-half-mile paved trail that borders the Fox River from Batavia, Illinois, to Saint Charles, Illinois. A trail that accommodates walkers, runners, inline skaters, mothers with strollers, as well as bicycles. Dogs on a leash were allowed. I enjoyed sitting on my back porch watching these different types of activities. Bicycles required a bell to be used when overtaking another person on a trail. People passing one another would call out that they were approaching on the left side. Just imagine, for a minute, a Merrimack River Trail that would go from Watson Park to the town line in Bedford. And this would follow the existing railroad tracks and could be used by all of these different types of users. Benches would be available in those locations, which provided a good view of the river. Just think of how many of our citizens would want to utilize this trail for walking, running, or a simple bicycle ride, or even taking their dog for a walk. Maybe the building code should be adjusted to consider trails instead of sidewalks. The project at Gilbert Crossing would have been an ideal location for walking trails that allowed for bicycles, especially if they were connected to their buildings. Internet references for your follow-up, planning for walks and walkability in small towns, Tree City USA, Fox River Trail, Geneva, Illinois, Jasper, Alabama, and North Jasper Neighborhood Parks. Thanks for your attention, and I'll answer any questions you might have.
Those are some awesome ideas and things that I think have been partially considered as well, but maybe not fleshed out completely, so I appreciate you bringing it up and talking to us about them.
Living in those two cities was a pleasure, and I think Merrimack has the opportunity to expand what it's doing with its parks. I know it's...
I wouldn't disagree. Does anybody else have any comments or questions?
Thank you.
No, thanks, Paul. No, I know the Heritage Trail was something that was planned. There were difficulties because of getting easements through the properties and so on. A lot of the, well, a couple of the businesses were really concerned about the liability of the whole thing, as well as the security of their facilities. But I had seen the, I do know it was the Fox River Trail, but I had seen that when, Paul's my father-in-law, full disclosure, so I had seen that...
You don't have to admit it.
And it was a wonderful place. And it's, in New Hampshire, I think we find that things move a little more slowly because funding is very different than it is in most other states.
Well, if you look in the internet today, there's a lot going on about walking and exercise and grants that are going to become available because of the funding for personal health. And so I think it might be an opportunity to start thinking at this point to see if some of those grants couldn't be obtained for your needs.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And you said you were going to send us a copy of that, right?
Mr. Goodrich?
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else wanting to address the Town Council and the comments from the press and public section?
Hi, Charles Lafon, Seven Linden Way.
Hi.
Hi, everyone. I just wanted to stand with that gentleman and say that, yeah, I say we do have to spend a lot of attention on our parks in our community. Right now, I think it's very crucial. We have a lot of building going on, we have a lot of things going on. And I personally am just, maybe because I have all this time to go around and see things, I'm very afraid that we're losing a lot of our resources that we've had in here for a long time. A lot of the pathways, a lot of the, maybe they weren't parks, maybe they weren't part of the official trails, but they were part of the life of Merrimack, coming down that Sahican River, down the backside. Like, I'll just give you one small example, behind Rite Aid, over where, I'm trying to remember the name of that road that goes up, East Chamberlain.
East Chamberlain, yeah.
So over by East Chamberlain, there used to be a trail that you could go all the way over to the other side of the Effie Everett. And slowly, over the years, that trail's slowly been whittled away. There's been a condo development put in, and I swear, whenever you came across the backside of that trail, you always felt like you were trespassing after that. And then this other condo just came in, and it looks like they might be putting in some pathways back there. But to be honest with you, nobody really tells us what's going on. There's some power lines back there that are clear. It looks like they might be putting some pathways in. I'm not certain, I pray that they are, because I'll tell you that I know a lot of kids that, over the course of their life in Merrimack, they learn those ways to get around town, and they can get that through there safely. This town is a very dangerous town, very dangerous. I mean, kids are always trying to avoid getting hit by bikes. So when you look at those pathways, those are very nice pathways to come across. And I know in the future, they might be dangerous from being secluded, but to me, they were always something that the kids seemed to learn, and it only lasted for a couple of years. Like, let's say when they were nine or ten, I mean, ninth grade or tenth grade, they would learn these pathways when they got over to high school, it seemed like. And then they get their driver's license, they wouldn't need them. But right there, that little part right there where they went from junior high to high school, they seemed to unlock the whole secret of the town. I remember one day, a couple of kids came and got me. Come here, Mr. Lafon, I gotta show you this. And I even wrote that up in Facebook this year, and I just said, I hope they'll always have that, that we don't lose that. And I'm just saying, I double it with him, and I want to say I was guilty. I was over at Watson Park today, I'm the guy that took the pictures, so. I didn't mean to start anything, I just, I don't know if that thing's going to be temporary over there, or it's going to be there for a year or two, or if it's going to be there forever. I don't like the fence. I didn't like it when I went up. I know a couple of you, I thought were gonna, I don't know. I, it's up, let's keep it up. But I think we ought to plan on taking it down someday. I really do. I think, I think it's ugly, I think it's horrible. I think it has a bad, bad message to the people in Merrimack. The way that fence went up, the way it was put in, and the way it was left, I think, I think it's a bad message. And I feel sorry for the guy, I didn't, I didn't mean to, Mr. Fence Guy's a very nice guy. He was very kind to me, he explained everything. He was a very nice guy. But I just beg you guys, please have an excellent plan on that thing.
All right, thank you.
I just, I just would, if Mr. Lafon could just add a little clarity. I think when you, I think I know what you meant, but I just would like to hear from you. You meant, when you said Merrimack's a dangerous town, you're talking about possible collisions of kids on bikes on our main streets, as opposed, yes, I thought so.
I've been, I've been arguing since the eighties. We had a Town Council here at one time that was very big on that. As a matter of fact, I lived over in Cota Road, and they actually helped open up a lot of the roads over there with clearing trees, opening up corners, additional parks over there. And there was a big plan of clearing out more of Merrimack like that, but it just never, it was expensive, I guess, to clear out trees like that and keep everything overhead clear, but, yeah. We had a lot of kids, not a lot of kids, we had a couple of kids get hit, you know? Some of them, very luckily, just got, like, tossed into the side of the street, like, maybe ten or fifteen feet. That's still, you know? People just don't slow down. I mean, I had a kid, my foster son, he got hit over by the library, got sent into the library parking lot, up that embankment, almost into the rocks, okay? By a truck coming around the corner. I mean, yeah, Merrimack is not a safe place, so if there's ways the kids can drive around here without having to get out on the main strags, oh, anyways. Yeah, that's what I meant.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else wanting to address the council?
One thing I forgot to mention is, there's a rock with a plaque on it at Watson Park that said the bridge burned on April seventh. That's incorrect. The bridge burned on April twenty-seventh.
April twenty-seventh. Okay, we'll let our public works department know, whoever put that sign in. Just kidding. Thank you. Okay, so if there's no other comments from the press and public. Recognitions, resignations, and retirements. None of them are here, okay. So we have three town employees that we would like to recognize for their full-time service in the town. They will be presented with recognition plaques, but they couldn't make it this evening. Xenia Simpson is a purchasing agent accountant. Will receive a twenty-year plaque, her date of hire was six twelve two thousand. Jacob Stevens, an equipment operator one, will receive a twenty-year plaque. His date of hire is eight twenty-one two thousand. And Brian Frillay, equipment maintenance foreman, thirty-five years, and will be receiving a lamp. His date of hire was five six nineteen eighty-five. So we'd like to congratulate them and thank them for their longevity in terms of service here in Merrimack. Okay, any other comments? So appointments. Each year, we like to review with each of the different departments, so we have a couple of appointments to try and catch up with. We're a little behind because of COVID-nineteen interference and things like that, but the annual review with the Zoning Board of Adjustments, submitted by the Zoning Board of Adjustment Chair, Richard Konesku. Per the Town of Merrimack Charter, Section six dash six, at least annually, there should be an annual review with the Zoning Board of Adjustment. This agenda item is to highlight the board's significant actions, current projects, and anticipated actions, and to raise any concerns, the council should know or could act upon. Is Richard here? There you are.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board.
Good evening.
This is my first time doing this, so I guess, what would you like to know? Or should I just start presenting?
Go ahead and present if you have. Typically, they go through a listing, just briefly, of what you've been doing over the past year, your activity levels and things like that, and then let us know if there's anything special that needs to come up, or then we'll see if there's any questions from the board, from the council.
Sure. So in looking at what we've done as a board, we've had forty petitions that we've heard and weighed in on. Seven of them had been withdrawn, thirty-one granted, and two denied. A lot of continuances occurred this year because of COVID. In fact, one entire session had to be continued, I believe it was the March session. So we had a couple of petitioners that were continuing with the intention of being heard when we presented in person, and since that did not happen, they started to stop requesting continuances and let us hear the cases. Something that we've been seeing a lot of in terms of cases is, there's a lot of residential variance requests that are happening. And I think more than what we've seen normally. For a lot of these people, it's either building a garage or adding an addition, but specifically because our setback criterias are pretty strict in Merrimack, and we have a lot of non-conforming properties, which means we're going to hear a lot more of these cases. So, I mean, I suppose it's a good thing people are adding on to their houses, that's nice to see. I know that there have been a lot of concerns brought to the zoning board about certain residential uses, such as apartments that were being constructed. We seem to hear about that a lot. However, I don't believe we've had a whole lot of movement there this year, as we have in the past. So, we've been busy, but not too busy. One of the things that we've noticed is that, since we're doing all of our meetings virtually via Zoom, we do not see nearly as much, I would say, we don't see as much communication from a butters. So I guess it's, it's kind of disheartening that we don't get as much input from a butters when there are issues that need to be addressed. But at the same time, it's now how we're doing business because of COVID. In this past year, we've had a longstanding member retire, Leonard Worcester, and actually, it was a surprise to the board, we were not made aware of it until recently. So we never got the opportunity to thank him for his years of service. Also, our vice chair has recently resigned from the board as they have moved on. Kathy Stroud has moved on to North Carolina. So we wished her the best of luck with her move. That leaves us with a full-time position vacancy and one alternate vacancy. The question has come up, are we going to have any type of an election for a replacement vice chair? And our decision, it seemed unanimous, was we want to fill that fifth member before we make a decision like that, because it gives that, whoever we bring in as a member, that opportunity. I know that Ben is one of our newer alternates, and he's expressed interest in stepping up to a member, and the rest of the board, I think, is pretty much in agreement that that would be a great decision. But we do understand there has to be a thirty-day window before anything like that can happen, in case somebody else would like to step into the full-time member position. Aside from that, there's nothing off the top of my head that I can think of.
Ben Lee.
Thanks, Rick. Great first time, perfect. So your meetings, there are five members, four members of the zoning board, is that correct?
Correct.
Is there a reason, or is it some of your membership that makes it so you have to meet virtually? Because I think it is important to get a butters' input when we're hearing things like, you know, requests for variances and so on. So is there a reason you're still meeting virtually?
All I know is I'm given a script to read from the office, and it says, "We will continue to meet virtually until further notice." So I, I'll be honest, I would kind of like to resume in-person meetings because I do think that gives a butters a better chance, especially one... I do think that gives a butters a better chance, especially ones that don't want to have to deal with the Zoom platform, or deal with calling in and waiting on hold through an entire meeting, which, I mean, I can see how it's off-putting for, for, for some of butters.
I agree. I agree, and I think it is important that they have that opportunity to participate in, in an easier fashion than Zoom. I can't stand Zoom meetings, because I, primarily, I have to look at myself the whole time, and it bothers me, but I, I, I'll, I can find out, I, there's possibly a reason, I just don't know, I don't understand right now.
I mean, if, if there was an option, I would, I would end Zoom meetings today, just 'cause it's, I, I don't think we get enough input from the general public.
So you have five members and, and two or three alternates?
So we have four full-time members right now, including myself, and two alternates. So we sit in an alternate in a full number.
Each time, for now.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't think the town has got any regulation, I know the community development department may be working on, on some prescription that, that they want to stay with virtual meetings, or they're concerned about the, the, the presenters and, and crowds. So I don't know how large of a crowd you typically get at a meeting. Obviously, we can only handle like sixteen or so seated in the room here.
So when we would meet in person, I would say it would be normal to have at least four to five of butters, you know, show up for one petition or another. I'm lucky if we have one person show up that's not presenting, so it's...
You don't, you don't foresee that as a particular issue at this point?
Yeah, unless there's a particular petition or set of petitions that is rather controversial, we're not really getting any feedback from a butters, so.
Yeah. No, I understand that.
I was just gonna say, to echo Rich, you know, sitting on the planning board, the planning board's been doing Zoom meetings since the, the onset of C-19, and I, what I would say to you, Rich, in, in my experience, I really think it's the issue that's gonna drive traffic to the, to the particular issue at hand. I mean, the planning board has been dealing with a project that's north, north of the homestead right now for the last couple of months, and we have people that are dialing in, whenever that's on the agenda, they're dialing into the meeting to, to participate. So I, I would, in a perfect world, I want us all back in here, seated here, so that people know that they can come to town hall and be able to listen to a meeting, be able to participate if, if they want to. And I suppo, I suspect that at some particular point that will happen. But I would also suggest that I, I think the issue's gonna drive community participation. And there are people out there that, that read the agendas, they pay attention to what's on the agenda, and, you know, they, you know, they make a conscious decision as to whether or not they're, they're gonna participate. And obviously, community development does a great job with, with making sure butters are notified about specific projects, and you know how word-of-mouth, you know, whenever there's something controversial in a neighborhood, word-of-mouth, it all gets around, and they'll show up when, when they feel that there's something that's gonna impact a particular neighborhood. So I, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be discouraged with, by the fact that you haven't, haven't had community participating at the ZBA level. Like, quite honestly, I think you should chalk it up to the fact that there have been some rather straightforward issues that have been prevent, presented to the, to the ZBA that are, that are non-controversial in nature, and just require thorough vetting so that it can be adjudicated affirmatively or, or not, so.
I, I guess the, I probably should have been a little bit more specific. I feel like when we do have opinions expressed in the Zoom meeting, they're always negative. However, when we would have presentations in person, the butters would come in and say, "Yeah, I really like this garage that this person's putting up next door." So I guess it's kinda, I don't know, I guess it feels kind of demoralizing, especially for the petitioners, that they know that the second that there's someone who's looking to speak, it's likely not in favor. And, and don't get me wrong, you, you, you get plenty of people that speak against petitions in general, but I guess I just kind of miss seeing the neighbor stand up and say, "Hey, I really like what he's doing." I don't know.
No, I hear you.
We, we can certainly pursue that, and my, my guess is working with community development to understand the situation. I know, anecdotally, that some of the presenters really appreciate the Zoom. I, I was talking to one landscape guy, or one civil engineer, who was saying that he's able to hit two or three different meetings in one night, because he can just sit there and dial in on multiple computers and then only come up when his time hits, he doesn't have to travel twenty miles to this town, and then ten miles to that town, and stuff like that. So, which is no reason to continue the virtual meetings, but it is, it is a fact of the situation. And we did get a request from Ben to, to consider him for the full-time position, he sent in a, a letter, so.
Excellent.
We have him on our list, and we'll, we'll pursue that as quickly as we can. And you said, if there's a, if there's a time limit, we'll have to meet that, but...
He's done, he's done very good in terms of being objective and asking questions of petitioners, so I think he would do great.
Okay.
Okay.
Cool, that's great, and you'll be involved in that interview process as, if anybody else comes up as well, so.
Okay.
By definition, you're part of the interview committee, whether you know it or not. So Becky will be reaching out to you to set up a schedule for when you and I, Bill, can meet with, with whoever is interested.
Okay, excellent.
Okay. And I'm sorry to hear that Lenny's retired from, from the committee at this point, I hadn't realized he had yet. I knew Kathy Stroud was, had moved out of town.
Yeah, it was, it was kind of sad, 'cause we, we just stopped seeing him and wasn't communicating to the...
Tremendous amount of resource for, for the zoning board specifically.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
But aside from that, you just have the two openings, and one full and one alternate position?
Yes.
And so as a, as a matter of public service announcement, if you're interested in, in being on the zoning board, it's an amazing board to be on, doesn't necessarily make you any friends, because you're supporting one guy or the other, but it does give you a lot of insight into what's going on in town, and what people are looking to do, and things like that.
That's not how you get new applicants.
Well, I know, but, you know, I, I'm being honest, okay? Open and honest. So if you have an interest, you will get trained, you don't need any special particular training. There, there's training through various different avenues, and the community development department has been a great support, I know for the planning board, 'cause I sat on it for a long time, but I believe also for the zoning board, to keep everybody in line, let them know what situations are and where you can go. So if you have an interest, you meet once a month, is that right?
Once a month.
On the third, or fourth, or something like that, week of the month?
I see, it's, it's usually the, I believe it's the last Wednesday of the month.
Last Wednesday of the month, fourth Wednesday, or something like that.
Yeah.
If there happens to be five, you get an extra day off at the end of the month, but... And they're all scheduled, you get all the details, you get all the information you need, and then the presenters come and make their case. So, so contact Becky Thompson, the town hall office, and, and put your name in if you're interested. We need one full and one part-time, one alternate, not part-time, but alternates often will get seated and have voting privileges if a full-time member can't make it. And you, you include your alternates in the discussion, is that right? And they just don't vote, or...
Correct. Actually, we encourage the alternates into the discussion, for the most part, because typically, we will have people start as an alternate and move into a, a full-time position, so it's nice to be able to, I, I don't know how to adequately phrase this, but learn what kinds of questions you should ask, and, and sometimes what you, what you shouldn't ask of a petitioner.
Yeah, I agree, and I, when I first moved to town, and first time I interfaced with the zoning board, I noticed that the alternates were all sitting out in the, in the audience, and if they were needed, they would be called up and be able to sit at the table and ask questions. We, we've kind of gotten past that.
Absolutely.
The alternates are part of the committee, they just don't have voting privileges unless they're appointed as a full-time member for that evening. So you actually are involved, you're aware, you're expected to show up, so that you are ready to make a decision and, and respond to the situation. So whether you're an alternate or full-time, you're still an active member of the zoning board, or planning board, or whatever, and I think that's a great improvement, so. If there's nothing else, thank you very much, Rich, we appreciate it.
Rich, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and the members of the board for the service to the community. It's, it's tough work, but I know it's rewarding work, and we appreciate it.
It is, and it's fun.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Alan?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, just as an endorsement to Tom's public service announcement, you can survive membership on that board, I have, and I enjoyed it.
Good.
There you go. Perfect.
A lot, a lot of people do, I'm not saying that you can't enjoy it.
I mean, I've been doing it for eight years, I, I, I like it, so.
Good. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, number two under appointments is an annual review with the heritage commission. This was tabled back on October eighth, submitted by heritage commission co-chairs Ralph Guerins and co-chair Chip Pollard. Per Town of Merrimack Charter, section six dash six, at least annually, there should be an annual review with the heritage commission. This agenda is to highlight the commission's significant actions, current projects, anticipated actions, and to raise any concerns, the council should know or could act on. Thank you, Paul.
Okay, I'm Ralph Guerins. One of the topics, the first one, is significant actions, and I'm sorry that I have to say that Anita stepped down as chairman, and Chip Pollard and I didn't have a socially acceptable...
Because we need for you to be heard by the public.
Did not have a socially acceptable exit plan. So we decided, we decided to share it. The significant accomplishments, we, we provided a long list of them in the annual report. And since then, due to the, the lockdown, apopacy of members...
Yeah.
And the weather, we just could not go out and walk the trails and do the surveys that are necessary to continue, okay? And so we, we do need more members, there's only three of us.
Okay.
So we have to publicize that need.
And this is a good place to do that.
Yes.
So tell us about what the committee's doing and, and what you need people to do.
All right, I've got a list of what the current major projects are. We're supporting the two seventy-fifth celebration, okay? And Chip volunteered to be on that committee, and so is Anita. And I want to publicly thank and, and recognize Anita's contribution.
Oh, absolutely.
Yes, she is a town resource, and she's mentoring me, if I'm mentorable, you may disagree on that, okay? But that's gonna be a contribution, be active on that, and I'll make my barn available, you know, if you have open houses, okay? One of the big current projects is the Turkey Hill graveyard markers. If you've been passed there, it's a significant effort, and I'd like to publicly acknowledge Ri, Richard Guy Millan for that work. He's the past president of the New Hampshire Old Graveyard Association, and they have that Turkey Hill graveyard looking spiffy. And we expect to have visitors from other towns and look at it, it might not be as popular as Wildcat Falls or Watson Park.
Well, that's probably a good thing.
But it is one of the best ones in New Hampshire. Before moving here, I lived in Lexington, and they've got an excellent one, but our graveyard, our grave stones are in a lot better shape than theirs. We're gonna continue our assessment that we started last year, this continuing project for marking the Class VI roads, district schoolhouses and fire station, looking to put signs up on all of them, and also on the boundaries of the four villages. And we do support the development of Thornton Ferry Scar Park, okay? We, there's some controversy associated with where the ferry landing is, and, but we'll let, we'll continue to support the resolution of that thing. People worry about whether that was the real Thornton Ferry landing, or whether that one was further north. Okay, then, another continuing project is cooperation with the New Hampshire Preservation Alliance Initiatives, where they're trying to document where all the stone walls are, Barbara's participating in that. They did the radar penetration of it, and they found out where the stone walls are, they want us to assess if, what happened to them, are they really there? So we have maps that we have to go through, it, it's a very intensive thing, huge.
Yeah.
But we, championship trees, old barns and culverts, that's what they're after as well, and, and we're cooperating with that. And what we anticipate, Chip and I came up with this, is instead of us trying to go out and survey all the barns, we hope to crowdsource that. You know, lots of kids, has many, you know, that would be interested in history can participate. Now, what we need to do is get your permission to work with I, IT, and host that, so that people can input it, okay? We, we would publicize the fact that we're looking for that information on newspapers, Facebook, and public service announcements. And that way, it has several advantages on that, because it, it stirs up interest in preserving our heritage in the two seventy-fifth, okay? Make them participate. And I think that's, that's what we're trying to do, and that we're cooperating with the historical society in, in that initiative. They'll be starting working on pay, on putting things on Facebook, we'll get people to, to donate that content, and rather than hard copies and folders, they can be electronic. And we'll, we'll develop a specification on how to say that, 'cause just, stone walls are not just stone walls, some are pile of rocks, some are boundaries that can't be moved, some are inputs to that radar project. Okay, now comes the concerns, I want to cover all the topics, okay? What concern, and we discussed this with Paul, is the physical condition of the schoolhouse. You know, our, our head, our head historical society schoolhouse, okay? The, the location of it doesn't promote interest, no visibility, that's the first thing, you know. Second thing is, storage and work areas are very limited. We do get a lot of people who, and we need, we need to help organizing the files and filing things and taking new material in, there's not many workstations, and, and the floor is giving way, continual repairs. And, and most of that is due to the fact that the, the siding of the thing is on a hillside, and the water comes all the way down from Home Depot, and goes in the back, not in the schoolhouse proper, which is very solid and can be moved, according to Bill Listoka. But the two additions that were put on later on, which were also moved onto it, are the ones that bear the brunt of the water going down, and we spent twelve hundred dollars on repairs last year. So what I'm, what we talked with Paul about is, there's several ways we can do, we can just continue to patch it up whenever something happens. The, we have cabinets full of, metal file cabinets full of material, it's heavy, and the floor is having a bone, and we know that's from the, the twelve hundred dollars work we did, that those beams and plates in there are, are going to give way. So we have to decide whether we want to, well, once we open it up, okay, we gotta do something, because we gotta move stuff out to open it up, and there's no place to move it, okay? But one of the plans would be to rebuild that additions onto the schoolhouse, so that they're movable, and if we ever get land that we can move the schoolhouse to, on, with three, for example, you know, we could move the thing in two pieces, and we'd get more room temporarily, you know, when, for when things get, things get better, okay? And then, so we're, we're meeting with a contractor and get an estimate that, because one of my other jobs is treasurer of the historical society, and I gotta submit a budget item to Paul, and so I have to, we have to decide what the options are for that. Now, the second one is, the second concern is the effect of the rapid development on our physical heritage. You know, we need to have a, a way for the projected or, or projects to more directly notify us, so we have time to research its historical significance before we pass on it. No more direct feed rather than hearsay. Okay, any questions? Chip, to help me out?
Does anybody have any questions, comments? So I, I think that you need to work with Paul and Eileen as, as far as any support you need from the IT department. That sounds like a really interesting project.
Yes.
And, and they can... And they can give guidance in that regard, right, Paul?
Yes.
And moving the schoolhouse sounds like a big project, and of course we have-
It does, right.
Need a place to put it.
Yeah.
So you guys have a lot of work ahead of you at this point, it sounds like, which is good and bad, you know, for a volunteer-
Fundraising, fundraising is one of them, yeah.
And you have three members now, and you, your-
Heritage-
Heritage Commission would normally be five members, or-
Five members and three alternates.
And three alternates. So obviously, between that and the Historical Society, we could use all the input and support we can get from people, especially if you have an interest in the heritage of the town to, we have a lot of material, you have a lot of material in filing cabinets and stuff that needs to be sorted through. You have quite a few projects you're working on around town, it sounds like. So there's, there's plenty of things to have people come in to volunteer and do, it's probably one of the more fun committees to be on, because you get to study these things like stone walls and stuff like that.
Yeah, championship trees, yes.
To understand that heritage and that history is pretty fascinating, and I'm sure there are a lot of people that would love to give some time. And again, if they contact the Town Hall offices, we'll be able to get them in touch. If they contact Becky Thompson, Executive Secretary, she can get them in touch, and we can figure out how to get people appointed.
Yep.
But we definitely need people, we very much appreciate Anita's efforts, and the fact that she's staying around and helping is wonderful.
Yeah.
She is a, just a treasure trove of knowledge about the town, and has been a great asset to us. And I appreciate your stepping up to keep us going forward here.
By default.
Well, she felt that way for the last three, four years that she came in, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ralph. So, and our third appointment this evening is with Merrimack Public Library, looking for an update submitted by the Board of Library Trustees Chair Deborah Covell and Library Director Yvette Kouser. The Town Council will be presented with a library update. You can pull over another chair, Yvette, if you need to-
We're not in the same level, yeah. We keep our distance, so.
Okay.
Yes.
Hi.
Hi.
Can you hear me through this? So I'm just going to keep my mask on, so-
I can, whatever makes you most comfortable, you're more than six feet away from everybody, so if you want to take it off, you can.
Okay. I'm Deb Covell, I'm the Chair of the Library Board of Trustees, thank you for inviting us here again. I'm here with Yvette Kouser, from, who is our director, and there's also Janet Krupp, the Library Board of Trustees Treasurer, is also here. We have three other library trustees, there's Janice Tibbetts, Karen Fried, and this year, Sohini Gupta has joined our board. So we're here to share the annual update of the Board of Trustees and the library, and just talk about what our future plans are, and if you have any questions, and please feel free to just interrupt us, or, you know, speak up at any time, we'd love to answer them. So I'm just going to let Yvette get started, so.
Well, thanks for having us. So, yeah, I mean, we've, you know, we've been closed for a little while, and then we opened, and we're going through a very careful, multi-phased reopening plan. I do want to give some credit to our colleagues up at the State Library. You really appreciate the kind of research, and very thorough research, that librarians can do when you're in a pandemic, you know? No, I'm serious, the resource page that we have at the State Library on the New Hampshire Library Association professional page is extensive, and it's constantly being updated and added to. So that's something that we get to go to for updates on pretty much everything you could imagine. So Lori Fisher is the Assistant State Librarian, and she used to be the Director of the Bow Library, I'm sorry, of the Baker Free Library in Bow, and she's, she just won a recognition from the NHLA for her contributions, for keeping us all in the loop. So that's, that's one thing. So like I said, we've been operating under a multi-phased reopening plan since March. So the current phase that we're in, I believe, is 6A. I couldn't tell you how many phases there are anymore to it, there were nine, but there may not be nine now.
Well, they may add to it.
But our current phase requires masks or face coverings to be worn while in the building, adhering to good hygiene practices, and that's you, Paul, maintaining social distancing. We've installed plexiglass dividers at our public desks, we've removed patrons' soft seating to promote social distancing, and modified workspaces, so there's fewer opportunities for staff using shared workspace. Any shared workspace, you know, if there's a shift change, those areas are wiped down during that shift change, phones are wiped down, and that kind of thing.
And I think if you had been in the library before and then after, you can tell they've changed where the desk is, they've tried to create a really, the safest possible environment while still be very welcoming to the public and keeping the public and our staff as safe as possible. So I just really want to commend the staff, they put a lot of thought and effort into creating this plan and creating a good workspace for everyone, so it's really nice. And it feels very welcoming still, it doesn't feel awkward or uncomfortable, so, thank you.
Okay. And these COVID-19 procedures are going to be in place as long as it's prudent. We close in the middle of the day, between 2:00 and 3:00, on the weekdays, to do midday cleaning. All of the high-touch surfaces are wiped down. We're also quarantining our materials for 72 hours, so if you return something to the library, it will stay on your record, it'll stay on your card for 72 hours until it's quarantined, is complete, and then we'll check it in and go ahead and shelve it. All materials that are moving in the state interlibrary loan van, those are also quarantined for 72 hours before they get on the van, so that we can just really ensure that there's no transfer of anything on materials. Like I said, there were a lot of resources that librarians had access to, and some of them were companies that study the effects of things on surfaces in terms of archive materials. So the best practices for us is to just quarantine something for 72 hours, and I could talk a lot about that, but you fall asleep, because I know everything about it.
And along with that, on Yvette's knowledge, they have been implementing some new services, maybe some of you have taken advantage of curbside pickup that started during this, when the library was closed, which I'm always saying at the trustee meetings, please don't get rid of that. Even if the library even ever opens up fully again within the near future, please keep doing curbside pickup. It's a really wonderful service, you can place your books on hold, you'll get an email, you give them a call, I'm here, they just bring them out to you, it's wonderful. So it's really a lovely service, so, that I hope will continue, so.
We will continue, Deb.
As long as the Library Trustees are pushing.
No, because it's not just the Library Trustees that push for it, you know, she only gets one say, and, you know, there's lots of feelings.
But if you, if you think about it, you know, if someone comes to the library, and it's difficult for them to get out of their car and get in the building, why shouldn't their books be brought to their car? Like, it makes perfect sense, but it wasn't something that was implemented before, but the situation put the staff in a position of, how can we best serve everyone? And it really is an improvement in services, so.
Okay.
Yeah, when we initially closed the first, that first week, in the middle of March, one of my staff roller skated out to the cars, and we had a little, little car hop thing going on, for those of you who know what car hops are. So, yeah, our service model is something we're calling pop-in and pick-up. You know, our, in our, in our phased reopening plan, the goal is always to open and continue to open, and we want to do that slowly and carefully. So right now, we, because we've removed seating, you can't really sit down all day and read the paper, but you can reserve a table and sit down for like two hours and read the paper, you know? I think you can, you might be able to check out the paper, actually, you can call the library and find out, because I don't know. But, you know, we really want you to just kind of come in, get your stuff, you know, say hi to us, get your tech help, and that kind of thing, and then kind of be on your way, just so we can keep everything moving. We do have a building limit for how many people can be in the building. So in our initial opening in September, you know, several of us were taking rotations, sitting at the door and counting to make sure we didn't go over our limit. But the other thing we've done, we've resumed notary services. Over the summer, we had permission to add outside seating under a couple of canopies, you probably remember seeing that, and so now all of these services have just moved inside. So we've started up notary services again, that's been very popular again, you know, it's a need that people have. We also have a J.P. on site, if you need something, you know, marked that way. We're going to resume our passport acceptance facility services in January, and eight of the staff, two are renewing and six are starting on as new passport acceptance agents. And I know we've had some calls for when is that going to start up, and so we're getting ready to do that in January. I don't have a specific date, but it will, we are getting ready, we're ready. We, we will have, when we start up the passport acceptance services, we're going to have an online registration form, so you can make an appointment online and get a confirmation email, so that's going to be very convenient. Go ahead.
Sure. In addition to those things we did during this time, the trustees allocated additional funding to Hoopla, which is a digital platform where patrons can borrow books and audiobooks, and I believe there's videos on there too, are there?
There's videos, there's comics, there's streaming TV.
Yeah, so, one of the great things about this particular service, though, is that it's always available, nothing is checked out, so if I want to read a book or listen to an audiobook, and I go to Hoopla and it's there, I can borrow it even if somebody else is borrowing it. So the trustees increased funding to that, and we also added a new service, Canopy, which has foreign films and some documentaries and some other things for people, which has proven very popular.
What did she say?
Horror.
Hoopla, no, foreign, foreign films.
Foreign.
Okay, sorry, foreign films, there might be horror films, I don't know, but there's definitely foreign films, so, foreign, foreign films, and documentaries. And then, there's also, we decided to suspend fines during the time that the library was closed, so there were no, and I believe, is that continuing still, Yvette, through this?
There's no accrual of fines, but if you had fines back in March or pre-March, then those were encouraging you to pay down.
Right, but we understood, it was difficult for people to get in, books are on your card for longer, so the Library Trustees decided not to have those accrue for people, just to take one more thing up there. Other things, for the building, the Library Board of Trustees worked with Paul McCally and Zenia Simpson to send out an RFP regarding the library building. We have chosen to hire SMP architects to perform a site selection and planning study. We're just looking at what the different options are for this building, what can happen on that site, what can happen in other places, just trying to be very thorough and gather lots of information as we look to the future of the library, so. Want to add anything to that, Yvette?
To the building?
Anything.
It's just really exciting. I think we're really excited. And this is continuing in the process, you'll remember that we hired a space study consultant, you know, to do a space study of the building, maybe like two years ago now. So now this is all building on, on that project.
Okay.
I think, you know, we talked a little bit earlier, you guys were talking about Zoom and Zoom fatigue, and certainly we hear a lot about that on my end, too, and people are still feeling a little bit isolated. So what I think, you know, I'm seeing in the library, what we really need to focus on is to continue to foster a sense of community, you know? We're still your library, we're still the place where you can come, pop in and pick out, you know, pop in and pick up your stuff. But if you have questions about things, or you need training on Zoom, or something like that, you know, we're the people you can go to for that, because we know how to do it. We were able to increase our online presence and social media footprint by creating a YouTube channel, as well as a TikTok account. I don't do TikTok, but I'll, I have some quotes from the young folks who do TikTok, and who have commented on our TikTok, and they say, "You made the library look so fun again."
Okay.
"I'm so glad you're on TikTok now, it's fun to see and makes me feel like I'm not weird for enjoying it there." I'm not sure what that means. The library has a TikTok? Good, so it's not just a bunch of old people that tell me to shush. I've never told anyone to shush. I usually have people telling me to shush. All of our events have shifted to virtual. We're doing both synchronous and asynchronous events. So synchronous, you watch it as it happens. Asynchronous, you watch it when you can, because it's recorded. And we're finding that because of Zoom fatigue, kids are on school, you know, parents are having meetings and so on, that the asynchronous is really more popular and easier for people to get to when they can. And it makes it a little bit challenging for collecting statistics, because we have to collect synchronous and then asynchronous, and that doesn't exist in our statistical report for the state, but it will. We are going to continue to offer these virtual programs after we open. You know, we would love to start doing in-person programs when it's appropriate, but we will also figure out a way to do both. We have, we did do one in-person event on Halloween, we had permission to do trunk or treat in the parking lot between 2:00 and 4:00, and we had over 530 people show up, socially distanced, masked. We passed out candy appropriately, the way everyone wanted us to, down a tube or through a catapult, but, you know, it was really nice, and people really appreciated it, and they would love to have us do it again. You know, I noticed the really young little ones were the ones who came in the daylight, you know, so that was nice, but we had fun, it was good. So we're also continuing to respond to the needs in our community partnerships, like we just finished a coat drive with one of the Girl Scout troops. We are also participating in the townwide food drive that you heard from Paul earlier. We've got our tree up for the Lioness Operation Santa program with the gift tags, that's going to happen, and we're going to be a pickup point for that. Some of us are possibly participating in Santa Calling with Parks and Rec, I won't say who. And we're going to be promoting as much as possible the Mr. and Mrs. Claus Drive By, that just, that news just came out this week. And I'm on the committee for the town's 275th anniversary events, so we're, we just still want to, you know, support as much as possible what's going on in our town. I've been working with a couple of Girl Scouts this year during the pandemic, and meeting with them on Zoom, who are completing Silver Awards with us, which is really lovely. And I've been communicating with a family who would like to donate books in memory of their infant son who passed away. So it's really amazing that people reach out to us and want us to help hold memories of their family.
So, thank you, Yvette. You can tell the library is very invested in the community, obviously, and our staff take their commitment to Merrimack very seriously. And I would like to put a plug in for the Library Board, as with the other boards that you heard about today. We have five members, but there are three open alternate positions, and much like the other board, the alternates would attend our meetings, and then if somebody was absent, one of the five trustees, they would be able to vote, but otherwise, they, we would just welcome their input and involvement, so I just wanted to mention that. We've been working on our budget, which we submitted, and thank you to Paul McCally for meeting with us via Zoom to offer some input and advice. And we also are very honored to have received a DCU grant for programs that make a difference in our community for $5,000. We really appreciate that DCU has been a very big supporter of the library and its programs. And we're working with the Quimby family, who would like to make a substantial donation to the library in memory of Barry Quimby, so we are very grateful for that as well, and appreciate Dr. Quimby thinking of the library like this. Over this upcoming year, we're going to be working with the Director for a new strategic plan, so that's something that needs to be done, so that'll be on our agenda, so.
Okay.
And I think in terms of our strategic plan, a good thing to look at is introducing a goal for the library to really look at accessibility, equity, and diversity and inclusion in our programs, policies, and procedures. The New Hampshire Library Association and the American Library Association this year put out a statement of anti-racism. You know, we, we have lots of different folks who come and use the library, and the library is for everyone. And the library is also the place that, where I think it's the most appropriate for us to help foster open communication about different ideas and points- for us to help foster, uh, open communication about different, uh, ideas and points of view. And I think we need to step up and do more of that. You know, uh, two years ago, we hosted Human Library, which was an event where people in the community, uh, volunteered to kind of serve as human books and tell their stories. And then we had people who were, you know, transgendered or, um, you know, we had a woman who was a psychic and it was just come learn about someone who's different from you, but really not that different, you know, underneath things. So, uh, I think that's a, a good goal for us.
Thank you, Yvette. Um, so I just want to end by saying we are really grateful to our staff for all that they have done during this time, to the community for continuing to support the library. Um, I want to acknowledge the Friends of the Public Library and the Merrimack Public Library Development Fund, who are, have still been meeting and still been coming up with ways to support the library. Unfortunately, the turkey shoot has been canceled for this year and I'm really disappointed. I know you guys couldn't come last year because it was the same night as one of your meetings, but it was my first one and it was fantastic. So I'm looking forward to hopefully another one in 2021. Um, we will be having the wreath, um, auction as Paul mentioned earlier. So hopefully people will take a look at that on the Facebook page. And we're just ready to pivot if we need to, to move forwards or backwards and in any way we can, continue to provide excellent services to the people of Merrimack. So, do you have any questions for us? Well, kudos to Yvette and the staff. They've been working very hard, really diligently, so.
I, I would like to have kudos to our trustees who are incredibly supportive all through this whole time. Very, very helpful. Thank you, Janet.
Just a comment, I, um, happened to be driving by when you had your trunk or treat event and it looked like everybody was having a blast. Seriously, I, you could tell the smiles from underneath the mask. You could tell that people were having a great time. And the fact that you told me over 500 people came, I think it's just, I think that's amazing. You know, in light of everything that's been going on, I think everybody at the library deserves a lot of credit for putting on that program so that the young kids could get out. Just, I've been effusive in the past, I'll continue to be effusive. Good word, uh, as it relates to the library. Sorry, just, you know.
Thank you.
Folks continue to do a great job. And I know that this has probably been a trying year for the library and still being able to provide, um, services to people. And I think, I think your approach of emerging and taking a very cautious approach while you open up is, is appropriate. And I think, I know, don't want to speak for the chairman, but I know the chairman's been, you know, very, um, vocal about people taking precautions, but also living their lives and being able to get out, to congregate and regregate with people and still maintain precautions. So, um, I think, like, like I said, I think what you've been doing has been dynamite. The one question I do want to ask you is I had the occasion to call the library about a month ago and, um, I've been purged. My library card no longer exists.
Okay, so probably.
So can you educate people what they need to do to become unpurged, to get a library card?
What they have to do or what you have to do? What you have to do or what?
Mrs. Curso, what do I need to do?
A regular person needs to do, because, you know. So when we, when you have your library account, we set the renewal date to three years from the day that you are opening it, right? Because you might change your phone number, you might move, or you might grow up and not need a child's card anymore and we might need to change you to an adult status.
That could be it.
So. Oh yeah, you just come in.
Okay.
Pop in.
I will.
Pick up, you'll see everything's different. We moved the desk back to where it was, which is funny. Come see me.
It's like when I first moved to the community, it was the first thing I did was get a library card when I first moved to the community. I still have it, I just, I just don't, I mean, I'll admit, I'm not a, I, I go, I used to go in there and just would, would read the paper, to be perfectly honest with you. Uh, but the one opportunity that I want, I actually wanted to, wanted to check out a book. You know, I've been, I've been purged, so.
You don't, you shouldn't have waited a month, I'll just say, that sounds kind of rude.
No, that's fine.
You shouldn't have waited a month. You know, you know me, just calls, like, hey.
You have connections, you can just go right to Yvette.
We don't play that current, absolutely not, we don't play that.
Well, you know what, anybody in the town can call the library and get a card, so they need to go in, right?
Yes, and you can create an account, an account online and start using things immediately and then just pick up your physical card later.
Anyway, appreciate the laugh and thank you again for, for all the work that you're doing. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, you're welcome.
Thanks, no other questions, I take it. So thank you, and thank you, Yvette, for your help on Election Day.
That was so much fun.
You're on the 275th Committee, you're helped out with the elections. You do a lot of things for the community and we really appreciate it, thank you. Yvette was out at St. John's name with us the whole day. Was, was, uh, quite a help. Okay, we have no public hearing scheduled for tonight. Uh, legislative updates from state representatives. Don't see any state reps here today. Town managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to let the town council and the citizens of Merrimack know that the fence at Watson Park is complete. A, uh, local resident and owner of Mr. Fence Guy performed the fence installation for us. Uh, he discharged us four materials. So basically donated his time and his workers' time to install the fence. Um, the project came in well under what we were estimating be, in the budget. It came in at $13,000, which was about a $15,000 savings from what we were estimating when we were talking to other fence companies, so. But do want to let you know, and there is a gate, and correct me if I'm wrong, Kyle, it's 25 feet? 20 feet, so there is a gate that was put in and it's a 20-foot gate. So it can be opened or, or closed. If, as, right now it's closed, but if the council wants to open up that access again, the gates can be opened and we can have access to the water.
Okay, that it? Oh, Finley?
I just wanted to ask Paul, could you reiterate that gentleman's business? The name of his business?
It's Mr. Fence Guy.
Is he local?
He's a local Merrimack resident and he's a local business.
Mr. Fence Guy?
Mr. Fence Guy.
His name is Nickolin Stevens, he's actually my plow guy.
Yeah, Nickolin Stevens.
Yep, he's a great guy.
That's spectacular, he was very kind.
So he gave, he gave back to the community.
Big time.
Absolutely.
Excellent.
Awesome. Not that I like the fence, but.
I know, I'm opposed to the fence, but that was very kind of him. I mean, that was huge and I want him to be known, I appreciate that.
Okay. Is that it? Any other questions for the town manager?
Since, since he saved the town a couple of bucks, do you, do you think it's appropriate to send him a letter of thanks for?
Thank you.
Oh, absolutely.
Do you think that's appropriate?
Yeah.
Okay, we have no consent agenda for tonight. Uh, we have no old business for tonight, but we have a page worth of new business, so. Stay tuned. Number one, under new business donation acceptance for the Merrimack Police Department, submitted by Deputy Chief Matthew Tarleton. Uh, the town council to consider the acceptance of a donation of a spider net gun package valued at approximately $587 from Resident Dean King for the Merrimack Police Department's Animal Control Officer to catch loose or sick animals pursuant to RSA 31:95-E and Charter Article 8-15. That's not catching the animals, that's the, the acceptance of the donation. Just thought I'd clarify that.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Figured I'd drag Haley up here, she's really excited. First town council meeting, but I don't know if you've, uh, had a chance to meet Haley. She's our ACO and, uh, she's, does a fantastic job, so. Uh, as indicated in the write-up, so this, this all started, um, so Dean King, and I wanted to make sure that he was okay with me mentioning his name. There was a lot of attention, so he was the owner of the, um, the African serval, the cat Spartacus that went missing. Back in September and, uh, he was very appreciative of all of our efforts. Uh, the cat was missing for how many days was it? Almost a week, yeah. So he, um, wanted to thank us and Haley's always looking for equipment, tools. And one of them was a trap. And the other thing that he had suggested was this net gun, which I got to tell you, in 25 years, I never thought I'd be coming before the town council, asking for permission for a, uh, for a net gun. But, um, I don't know if he'd appreciate me calling him an animal expert, but I will. He seems to know what he's talking about and I know Haley, um, could use it. And as indicated, there's a lot of time we deal with sick or injured animals and they're reluctant to come near us. It's a uniform or they're just skittish or whatever. And some of them can't be trapped, some of them can't be snared. So this is just another tool and, um, I just think it would be a great thing to have. So, um, we haven't tried it, I, I mean, I've got it here. Um, we brought it, if you guys want to look at it, it's not charged. It basically runs on a CO2 cartridge. Uh, it fires the net, I don't know the, the diameter when it's opened up, I don't know if it's like. I think, for some reason, I got like 10 or 12 feet, um, where it opens up. The max distance is like 45 feet, but I guess the preferred distance is like 25 to 30. And again, this is just another way to humanely trap an animal, um, as opposed to chasing it around. We know what that does and, um, especially if it's somebody's pet. You know, the quicker we can, um, trap it and return it, or if it's, you know, we can't find the owner, we can, we can get it to a shelter, the better. So that's the, the concept behind it. I know Haley indicated that Nashville PD has one of the animal control officer there. Uh, and if you allow us to accept the donation, we'd probably have a bit of a training period to go through. Uh, we might actually have some of the firearms instructors, I mean, this is not a firearm, it's not considered one. But we'd probably get the guys trained up on it. So if Haley's not around, uh, on a weekend or whatever, we will have guys that are working on shift that'll be able to use it, so. So I don't know if anyone has any questions or, or anything?
Bill?
Uh, thank you, um, Captain, Captain Tarleton.
Deputy Chief.
Deputy Chief. For the love of Pete. Says Captain Tarleton on my memo. I have Deputy Chief, congratulations again.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate it.
And welcome, ACO Galito, it's good to see you again. The question I have is regarding the net. Are the edges weighted so that when, when you're shooting, it projectiles out? It, it's cylindrical so that it lands out like this? Is that how it's?
Yes.
Is that how it works?
Yeah, well, yeah, it just has weights on them. And the whole point behind the size of it is that the animals just almost get entangled in it. So they can't run away, so it basically capacitates them.
I imagine it would make, as, as Deputy Chief just said, it make, it's going to make potentially your job a, a lot easier for you in the long run, especially when you are able to get close enough to be able to deploy the, deploy the net to the animal.
For certain situations, definitely, like he has said, you know, domestic animals or even wildlife, a lot of times they have to trap fawns, coyotes, stuff like that. And we're typically, we're in an area where we can't discharge a weapon if we needed to put an animal down because it's not safe to. So in this case, we can actually trap the animal and then you can maybe keep the animal down if need be. Um, a lot of times I'm out on the Everett Turnpike trying to get dogs that are running down the side of the highway. And a lot of people try to chase after them and they push them out onto the highway. And this way we can push it back towards the woods, but try to get it on the side of the road rather than chase it, because that's the worst that it could be.
I, I guess the, the last question I would have is, is, have you ever been in a position where you've, and I'm not, and I don't know what you use for tools, you know, outside of you retrieving one of my dogs and bringing my dogs back home. Um, I don't know what, what tools to use, but I know that Fishing Game has used a tranquilizer gun in the past. So I'm assuming that this is a, a much better alternative than having, uh, and I'm assuming that you use a tranquilizer gun or you have access to a, to a trank gun. I'm assuming it's a much better alternative.
Fishing Game, we don't have one.
It's just Fishing Game that has it, okay. Okay, perfect.
So this is the best case scenario to have, to do something like that, definitely.
Okay, good deal. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Lon?
Yeah, just, um, to relate that I've seen one of those in action and I can tell the council, they are very effective.
Oh, good. So can you give us an idea of, are, are these one-time-use nets, right?
So the nets, so the net itself is actually in this part, this is it right here, so this is the net. So this is more than a one-time use? I don't talk about those.
The mic.
The mic. I'm sorry. Well, no, but for the public.
The nets that come here, so they're not one-time, you can actually use them as many times as you want. You just have to repack them every time, which is a whole process. You can, you can, for a small cost, continue to buy them. Um, they're not expensive, I think it's $18 for two nets. So it's, it's pretty inexpensive. Um, and then the CO2 cartridges go in here, so it's CO2 charge. Those go in there and those are $18 for a 10-pack. And it's all stuff that can be purchased locally, like Walmart and stuff like that. So it's very inexpensive tool.
How often would you expect to?
The expensive part, the actual piece of equipment.
How often would you expect to use this?
If I had a pack of 10, I wouldn't say more than that in a year, would be my thought.
Okay. Good. I was just, just trying to understand, the cost of the item is always one thing, but, but maintenance, maintenance is always another factor.
Yeah, I mean, I definitely have certain times a year that I would use it more with wildlife, especially the springtime and a lot of, when we have rabid animals and that kind of stuff, when all the babies are coming out.
Yeah.
Um, domestic animals, it's, it depends.
Right.
Depends on how many, like I said, how many animals end up on DW trying to cross the road or end up on the Everett Turnpike, it's, it happens quite a bit.
Use that amount of. Oh, all right. Okay, um, any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the town council approve a donation of a spider net gun package valued at approximately $587 from Resident Dean King for the Merrimack Police Department's Animal Control Officer to catch loose sick animals pursuant to 31:95, RSA 31:95-E and Charter Article 8-Hyphen-15. That furthermore, town manager or her proxy be authorized to sign any paperwork necessary to accept the donation. Furthermore, that the police department be asked to write a gracious thank you letter to Mr. King for his, uh, contribution to the animal control program here in Merrimack.
Motion is made by Bill and seconded by Lon Woods. Any other comments or additions? Seeing none, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? That passes 5-0-0. Great, thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much.
Deputy Chief, it's great to see you and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, do you say? I had to chuckle when I saw the letter signed by Captain Tarleton.
Have a good night.
You too. Happy Thanksgiving.
Which brings us to, I thought we were going to move this.
It should be quick.
Okay, it'll be quick. Number two, the safety policy review submitted by the Deputy Finance Director, Joint Loss Committee Chairman, Thomas Boland. The town council to review the recommended changes to the townwide safety policy for the Joint Loss Committee. This review is required every two years.
Deputy, Deputy Finance Director Boland is here. Uh, just a real quick overview on this. It's, uh, a housekeeping issue. Every, by state law, RSA every two years, this joint loss committee has to go through the safety policy and make sure the laws that it references are up to date and change anything that they see, they see fit that needs to be changed to make it more accurate with, uh, the way things are being done in business. Um, as you can see in the memo, there was, um, a couple of small changes that, uh, were made and I will let, uh, Tom go over those with, with the council, but I believe there were like three or four minor housekeeping issues that, that were made and some forms that we were using that got added to the policy that we've been using. Uh, do want to say the Joint Loss Committee does meet on, uh, a regular basis and they do go around to, to the town's buildings and, and check things out to make sure that we are operating efficiently. They also review all our worker comp claims from the prior month to see if there's a, is there a pattern? And if there's a pattern, what might not be done to help in education or training to alleviate some of those costs associated with those worker comp claims.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Paul did most of my work for us.
I was going to say, he just didn't leave you much to deal with.
But, uh, just to add a, a couple of pieces of information, the Joint Loss Management Committee is a, a 13-member com, committee comprised of a cross-section of town employees. All of the unions are represented as well as, uh, people in management roles and non-management roles throughout the town. And, uh, as part of this review that we're required to do, we also consulted with, uh, Phil St. Seer from Primex, our liability insurance carrier. Had him review our document just to make sure that it's still in compliance with all of the Department of Labor regulations, uh, if any of those happen to have changed, um, recently. Um, and Phil has confirmed that our policy as it existed was fine, didn't require any changes. Uh, we also solicited input from all of the town's department heads, asked them if there were any deficiencies.
asked them if there were any deficiencies or additions that they wanted to see addressed in the safety manual. They all indicated that they were, they were fine, excuse me, with the policy as it existed. As Paul mentioned, there are a few housekeeping-type changes, correcting some formatting and numbering and reference issues that we found as part of the review that we were doing. And then the HR coordinator, who's responsible for the incident reporting process in town, wanted to make a few minor changes to the internal incident reporting forms. And you can see those in the package of materials that you have. So if anybody has any questions about that, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay, Bill?
Just, it's a curio... And Tom, thank you to everybody in the committee that reviewed this. I appreciate the work. Just, it's more of a curiosity question. When we have new employees that join the town of Merrimack, are they required to read the safety manual as part of their onboarding process?
They are, and they're required to sign off on a form acknowledging that they have received it and read it.
Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. Any other questions? Barbara?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. Going back to the training, does annual training of the safety guidelines take place? And is that in addition to any new equipment? Does training take place for that before it goes into service?
The department heads would be responsible for handling that. And they do do that when they introduce any new equipment for use by the employee.
But do they have annual training, mandatory training in safety?
It's going to vary on a department-by-department basis. Certainly, some of the departments that use, you know, heavy machinery and things of that sort, there is ongoing training that's done on a regular basis to kind of keep everybody updated on the do's and don'ts and things to watch out for. And other departments, like finance, for instance, where I live, there's not much, not much call for an annual review.
Right, for safety purposes.
Yeah.
But we do get annual reviews or semi, not semi, but we get reviews of the safety policy that do come out. So for instance, I've been with the town fifteen years. Every so often, I'll get the policy, and I'll have to read through it and sign off that, yes, I have gone through and looked at the safety policy. So there, it isn't just a one-and-done with the safety policy. It's out there, and it's given to the employees to review again and again and again, so that it's fresh. And a lot of department heads, actually, it's on every evaluation about safety and safety consciousness. So it's brought up during the annual review with an employee about safety as well.
Also, in the section regarding safety rules and regulations, it gives different scenarios and different hazards, such as inhalation, et cetera. But you know the one thing I don't see in here? Backs.
Liftings.
Lifting, yep. Backs, wearing a back support for heavy lifting, using special adaptive equipment for when lifting certain, you know, items, such as belts and things for, like, big things. So, and backs are usually, at least in my world of nursing, you know, lifting is always probably, I'm sorry, back injuries is probably one of your most common workers' comp issues. You might want to consider.
Yeah, I don't have the specific reference in front of me. I'm pretty sure there is something. It may not be in a place that you would have expected to see it. But I can follow up on that and get back to you if you'd like.
Just putting it out there.
In addition to that, you guys review monthly any workers' comp claims or any injuries or difficulties that happen, even near misses, get reviewed by your committee, which includes people from all the different unions, as well as town employees and whatnot.
That's correct.
Our non-union employees and management staff. So you, they would see if there was an accumulation of that kind of stuff happening on a very real-time basis. I mean, if you're reviewing them on a monthly basis, that's...
And I do know that the departments where people are involved in lifting activities, they are constantly reminded of proper techniques and rules for when they need assistance and things of that sort.
And so when you do have an injury report, I take it that the records are kept under, as per HIPAA regulations? I think you and I had had a discussion about that one day last year.
Yes, all the records are kept. No names are given, but the claim, what the injury that happened occurs, but no names are given to the safety committee. But it's done. All HIPAA regulations and requirements are followed.
Welcome.
Cool. Any other questions? We need a motion to approve the recommended changes or updates to the safety policy.
So moved, Mr. Chairman?
Second.
A motion made by Bill and seconded by Barbara to accept the recommendation, recommended changes of the safety policy review. There's no other questions or comments? We'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining? That passes five zero zero. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
There might be. Did you guys sign these already?
I didn't see anything. What about the red folder?
No, there's nothing there. Probably do, and no, I don't see it here, so.
Okay.
Okay, great. Number three, authorization to withdraw from the solid waste capital reserve fund, submitted by Public Works Director Kyle Fox, the town council to consider authorization to withdraw and expend up to fifty thousand dollars from the solid waste capital reserve fund for the purchase of a new Bobcat Skid steer loader for the solid waste division to be used in the recycling center.
Mr. Chair, thank you. I just want to give a little background on why you're seeing these withdrawals coming forward. Last year, during the budget process, Department of Revenue Administration told us that since the town council is agents to expend, that they should be taken out of the budget and done on an individual basis to come forward with the council. So what we've been doing, and you'll see some more of this come forward as time goes on, is that what we've been doing is we've been looking at what needs to be purchased through the CIP, and using that CIP like we do with the budget, and bringing it to departments, say, okay, when you need it, when do you need it? Let's go forward. And trying to not present all of them at one meeting, because that could be quite a task. But to, actually, when we're going out to purchase them, to get it so we have a good price, coming forward and asking for it. With that said, this was in the CIP. It was in the CIP for a lower amount of money. The price of skid steers have gone through the roof. Both Kyle and I, when we got the price for a new one, we both called one another and basically said, what about a used one? And the price for a used one was almost as much as a new one. So we're coming forward tonight, and Kyle will explain a little more, to withdraw money so that we get one. There's two of these skid steers that are used at the transfer station. They're used in the recycling center. They're run pretty constantly, all week long, around with the recycling, loading that conveyor and the crusher for our recycling. And they get used backwards, forwards, transmissions, motors, things of that sort in that confined space in the recycling center. With that, I'll let Kyle go ahead and...
Thank you, Paul. Good evening, town council. Again, Paul did a great job introducing the topic and make my job kind of easy, I hope. As Paul noted, the...
We'll work on it.
All of our equipment is in a replacement schedule in the capital improvement program, and we bring that to both the planning board and the town council each year. The Bobcat that we're proposing to replace is a 2005 model year, so it's fifteen years old. And as was mentioned, it's used every day, all day by... We have two Bobcats, and we have two recycling attendants, so each one has one. So they're both being operated near full-time every single day. When we went to make this purchase this year, we found out that there were two issues with, which caused the much bigger price than we had planned on in the CIP. The first was Bobcat is introducing a new line of Bobcats, a different series, different from what we've purchased in the past and what was available last year. With the COVID issues that companies have faced, those models simply aren't available yet. So they're just not around. We were able to... So then the second issue was the model that we're replacing, Bobcat hadn't made for a number of years. They had a model bigger and a model smaller. The smaller one, of course, doesn't meet our needs. So we had to look at the bigger one. And as luck would have it, there's one in stock. It is a used model, but when I say used, it only has five hours on the engine. So for all intents and purposes, it is brand-new. The good news with that is that it is in stock. And with your approval, we can place the order right away, and we can get our replacement Bobcat and keep our operations working. So the one we're looking to purchase, it's an S-595 model. As I said, it's used with five hours on the unit. The base price for it, which includes the solid filled tires in the bucket, obviously, at the transfer station, we need the solid filled tires because they run over any manner of things, which, that's about a thirty-two-hundred-dollar add just in the tires over a standard Bobcat that a contractor would purchase. They've offered us a trade-in allowance of four thousand dollars for our existing unit that will trade in for a net price of forty-two thousand, two-hundred-and-fifteen dollars. And that's the request we're making of the town council tonight to approve that withdrawal from the capital reserve fund, solid waste capital reserve fund.
Finley?
How much was the new, the brand-new one that you really can't get?
They didn't give us a price on it because they don't have them yet.
Nope, fair enough. I've never purchased a Bobcat. I've never traded one in. I don't know anything about Bobcats. But I know in a car, when you get your deal for your new vehicle, the trade-in has a very low value because they have to turn it and make money themselves, or whatever their plan is. Is there any, is the type of Bobcat we use for recycling facility, would it be of use to, out in private, would it be better for us to try and market it ourselves? Or is it not worth the headache?
We've tried that in the past with varied success. I don't know, maybe Paul can weigh in a little more on this because he does a lot more of the shopping around.
Yeah, it's hit or miss. Sometimes, we use a couple of different auction agencies. Sometimes you get a lot of interest, other times you get none. For instance, this past spring, there was the state auction, and there was a piece of equipment that we were actually bidding on for one of our pieces of equipment. And the price went through the roof quickly during the online bidding process of it. And then for that same piece of equipment, in another auction agency, we bought a brand-new piece for our snow removal so it can shoot into the big trucks for five hundred dollars. You know, so, and that piece goes for fifteen thousand dollars. And this other piece that we were talking about, it was a flail mower for over the guardrails, was used, went up to three thousand dollars, and the bidding wasn't slowing down. Somebody was really hot to get it, and it went through the roof. So like I said, long story short, it's hit or miss on who's out there and what they're looking for to get. Like I said, we can try doing that. Fifteen-year-old machine, there isn't much life that's going to... They're not really going to try to turn that around, that Bobcat. The other problem is that our other Bobcat, you want to talk about price, our other Bobcat engine went, and it was almost fifteen thousand dollars just to replace the engine in the Bob, in the Bobcat, was only a couple of years younger than this one.
It's six years old.
Six years old, so, you know.
Fair enough. I just know in my line of work, you cannot get a new hot tub. They're out months. So it made the used cost skyrocket. So that's kind of what I was thinking, but anyhow, so. All right, whatever's best. I mean, if you had time to do it, it might be worthwhile, but otherwise, I'm good either way.
We can discuss it further tomorrow when we look at it and see if, what... We can do some research before we say we're going to trade it in or not.
So if we're going to do that, and like Paul said, we can, I would ask that my request change to the full purchase price, which is forty-six thousand, two-hundred-and-fifteen, to give us that flexibility to do the sale outside of this transaction.
Was there a reason this was put as expend up to fifty thousand? Were you trying to give yourself some buffer, or...
Kyle?
Or is the fifty, forty-six sufficient?
That was on the cover, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think when we started this back to get it on the agenda, we didn't know if there was other attachments we might need. That maybe in the old, from the 2005 to the new one, if they would fit. There's, we have some grappling hooks, and we don't have the forks for that because we have the forklift, but there is grappling hooks. And I don't know if this new bucket comes with the grappling hooks or not.
I actually don't recall, and that may be why. I apologize for not having that answer for you. Chris wrote the memo, and... Yep.
Put somebody else under the bus.
I shouldn't have given him the night off.
Okay.
So then, on our agenda item, hazard is fifty thousand. Are you looking for the forty-six?
So I would ask you to do the fifty thousand at this point. And obviously, if we don't need something, we won't spend it.
For fifty thousand, up to fifty thousand dollars, trusting that Paul McCallie and Kyle will make sure that they get the best deal they can. And if they do need attachments, which often those kinds of things do add up pretty quickly, so it's believable. Yes, Lon?
Yeah, it begs the question. I don't mind a little extra research and whatever, but it sounded like if this is available, it might be well to get our hands on it soon?
Correct. Yeah, so Chris had called. When I got this on the agenda, Chris had called Bobcat to, before we placed the agenda request, Chris called Bobcat to make sure that it was still available and if they'd be willing to hold it till after this meeting. And they agreed to do that. I obviously can't guarantee that they would do that later than tomorrow.
Which is why I had said, if it works, if it doesn't work, I'm good with where we are with the four thousand dollars.
Saying it is very good at this, she can do a quick search on like other auction sites to see what a similar model goes for. See if it's close, then we can make determination. But if we get, you know, if she sees that they're getting big money for these, then we'll go and do it our own way. But we can get this done pretty quickly to see what the value of it is.
Great, thanks. Thanks, Kyle.
So if there's no further questions, do we have a motion? To authorize the withdrawal of up to fifty thousand dollars from the solid waste capital reserve fund for the purchase of a new Bobcat Skid steer loader?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Bill, seconded by Barbara.
About the, and her proxy, I mean...
Nope.
This is...
Notes.
This is bigger than the other one was. It's five hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
Doesn't require state or federal paperwork to be filled out. If there's no other questions, we'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? That passes five zero zero.
Thank you.
And please get us the best deal you can.
Of course.
I knew the "of course," but I felt like I had to say that.
Yep.
Next on our agenda is Kyle again. The sewer line loca... Recommendation for the town council to accept Madeline Bennett Lane as a Class V highway.
This is kind of way back, going back to the beginning of the whole conversation with the sewer line. As part of the MOU with the school district, one of the stipulations was, once the sewer line was completed and accepted, that the town council would accept Madeline Bennett Road from Baboosook Lake Road to the roundabout. As the sewer line has been accepted, it has passed, the new sewer line has passed, New Hampshire DES and the Department Environmental, all their regulations and... um, New Hampshire DES and the Department Environmental, all their regulations and rules for slope and, and everything, so it has passed that. Uh, we have gone and scoped the, uh, the line a couple of times and, uh, it's, it's staying where it should be. Um, it came in under budget, the sewer line ex, the replacement came in under budget, which was always a nice thing to hear from the contractor and, uh, um, so we are here in front of you to ask you to, um, the MOU that you signed is, is to accept that portion of the road. Um, and Kyle can explain a little bit of why the sewer, you're not accepting the sewer line. Because through, um, ordinance and regulation, uh, deep, uh, the, the, the public works director accepts the sewer line and that's why he's here, just to ask you to accept the road. He can explain that more eloquently than I just did.
Thank you, Paul. Yeah, um, so yeah, the sewer, the sewer line reconstruction of the, what, what we commonly call the middle school sewer, um, was completed this summer, uh, by CSSI. As Paul noted, it was done under budget. Um, you may recall the, the developer put up one point two million dollars for the project and the final tally of the project came in at one million, seventy-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars and fifty cents. Um, so approximately a hundred twenty-two thousand, five hundred will be returned to the developer.
That still needs to be audited, that number, so.
Which, which is great news. The, uh, the project went very well. Um, as you know, it was a very difficult project, um, and I'm pleased to say that Public Works did accept the sewers. It meets, um, all aspects of line grade, uh, pipe tightness, um, the vacuum test, um, that they do on it. Um, so we have formally accepted it, um, per the, for the charter, uh, town code, the public works director has authority over sewers. So tonight, um, I'm here to, um, request the town council accept, formally accept Madeline Bennett Lane, um, as the town council is the agent to, um, accept roadways in, in a charter form of government, um, just like we do subdivision projects. And as Paul noted, in the memorandum of agreement with the school board, uh, that was one of the stipulations, once the project was completed and accepted, the town council would formally accept the, the road, uh, which, which had not previously been done since it was built in two thousand and five.
Do you, um, has the town been maintaining the road or has the school board, school district?
We've been maintaining the road ever since it was built, correct.
Okay. Um, I, does anybody have any questions on the concept of accepting Madeline Bennett? Bill?
Oh, no, I.
Lon?
I have a question about the acceptance of it. The sewer having been completed, action tonight, does that remove the easement type language in the?
Can you turn your mic on, please? Thank you.
Does, will tonight's action remove any easement granted to the school district going forward?
It will, yes. The school district now has no ownership, assuming you accept, accept Madeline Bennett tonight, the school will have no ownership of the, of Madeline Bennett Lane up through the cul-de-sac and any of the utilities and sewer underneath it as well. It'll be completely town-owned.
Okay.
Want to hear from him again.
So I.
Correct.
I know that you guys have the authority to accept it, but I want us to, um, affirm that acceptance because in my opinion, the town council specifically rejected the sewer when it was originally brought forward and, and, or at least supported the public works in rejecting it. And so because of all of this hoopla and all of this stuff, I'd like us to have a motion that affirms the director's efforts at accepting it, just so that we can, all across the board, show that, that everybody's online and, you know, on board with this. So we're not trying to take away your authority, we're just affirming that he did the right thing and, and we're all behind it.
I, I appreciate that sentiment.
And then the other thing would be a motion to accept Madeline Bennett Lane as a class, what is it?
Class five.
Class five highway.
Or the memorandum.
Or the memorandum, yes.
So just, and I apologize if, if this has been said, but has the school, uh, has the school district conveyed Madeline Bennett to us?
They don't need to convey it.
They don't need to.
Right, because the, the plan associated with the middle school project, um, had that as the intention all along.
Okay.
Um, so similar to a, um, a, a normal subdivision project.
I got you.
The, the one difference is, um, during a normal subdivision project, it's the planning board that recommends acceptance to the town council.
Correct.
In this case, because it's a municipal entity, the school district, they don't, they're not required to go through the planning board process.
I got you on that.
So in this case, Public Works is making that recommendation to the, to the town council.
Okay, 'cause then just, the cover sheets that I read says the school shall convey and transfer. That's the only reason why.
Okay.
I'm, I'm asking the question.
Gotcha. Um, the school board or, uh, business administrator Chevonal is aware that we're here tonight and, um, certainly supports it.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Can I get a motion to affirm the, uh, acceptance of the sewer line?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Bill, seconded by Finley, to, uh, for the town council, just to affirm the public works director's actions in accepting the sewer line along Madeline Bennett Road up to Jessica Lane.
Correct.
Into the town system. Yes.
Is the motion I just sent including the Madeline Bennett Road as well?
No.
No.
Very good, very good.
Is that everybody good?
Yeah.
It was a so moved, so I wasn't.
Yeah.
No, the chairman said there'd be two.
No, then I missed that, I apologize.
Oh, all right. Um, so we'll vote on that, um, that motion. All those in favor of accepting or affirming the director's actions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstaining, that's five zero zero. Now I'm looking for a motion to accept Madeline Bennett Road as a, Madeline Bennett Lane as a class five road in the town of Merrimack.
So moved.
Seconded.
And moved by Bill and seconded by Lon Woods. You guys are making me nervous here. Um, to accept Madeline Bennett Lane as a class five highway in the town of Merrimack. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, Bill?
Uh, should, should we, should, I don't know if it's necessary, but should we include the, the verbiage to, uh, according to the memorandum of agreement because it speaks to the distance and everything else?
Okay. If, if that's all right with Bill?
Yeah, that's fine, that works. I agree with you, Finley.
And Lon? So we'll accept it according to memor, the verbiage in the memorandum of agreement with the school district to accept Madeline Bennett Lane from, uh, Babuza Lake Road to the cul-de-sac?
Correct.
And I just wanted to come, I wanted to again thank the school district for partnering us on this, but I especially want to thank, uh, Connie Elvatsis at CSSI and Kyle Fox for the work that they've done to, to, as, as Assistant Town Manager McCallie indicated to bring this project under budget. I know from, from a council perspective, we had concerns at the one point two, is it gonna go over one point two, is it not? And it was kind of a roll of the dice, I hate to put it like that, but, uh, I think Director Fox and Mr. Elvatsis and the rest of his crew at CSSI really need to be commended with our thanks for doing a great job, working hard and, and bringing it in under budget for the, for the community. So that's a good thing. So thank you.
Awesome. We'll call for a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any of those opposed, abstaining, that passes five zero zero. Kyle, thanks a lot.
Thank you very much.
You guys did a great job.
Thanks again.
We really appreciate getting this behind us, um, or under us, or whatever you want to call it.
Under us is good.
Under us.
I like that.
So that now we can move forward and, uh, deal with other projects in town and not face this one all over again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kyle, happy Thanksgiving. Do you own your feeling?
Number five, consideration of proposed zoning ordinance amendments, first reading, uh, submitted by the community development director, Thompson, the town council to review and consider proposed zoning ordinance amendments. So, nice job.
Yeah, I trained them well. Mr. Chair, I, I want to say that, uh, in my tenure here and in, uh, my position, I think these are the first amendments since we went to a charter that are, are coming forward to the town council. Maybe there was one other.
Plenty of us. There's been several since I've been.
Okay, well, gee. I just block them out. I just blocked those out because, but, uh, Tim's in front of you, uh, Director Thomas is in front of you tonight to, to bring what?
I think they're usually from the front.
It's on, it's on.
It'll just take a minute.
It just takes a minute, it's on, it's on the back.
This is probably my worst PowerPoint presentation ever because it's a first reading and not a public hearing, so it's a four-slide overview of what we're talking about.
If you want to turn on your microphone, please.
It is.
Okay.
Just have to use it.
Director Thomas, Thompson is, is in front of you tonight to discuss, uh, what has been a culmination of efforts by the, by the planning board to bring this forward. Um, and like he said, this is a first read. There'll be, uh, two other opportunities, um, for one other, for the public hearing for the public and then, um, before, if it goes past the public hearing to town council for acceptance. So there's other ample opportunities for people to weigh in on, on this with comments. Okay?
Thank you, Paul. Members of the council, uh, uh, as, uh, Paul put together for you, this is a culmination of, uh, several months of work, actually probably close to nine to 10 months of work. This project actually started well before the COVID-nineteen, uh, issues started, uh, to hit the community and the nation. Uh, this was initially put on hold by the planning board, uh, back in February when we were still meeting in person. That's, just, there we go.
Had to wake up. Let's have a quick, quick.
The board, after we started resuming meetings, uh, via virtual meeting, uh, made the determination that they wanted to move forward with their public hearing in a virtual environment. Uh, we had two public hearings on this, the first in September, then we had a second public hearing in October to, uh, go over and make a few modifications from the initial set of proposal. Uh, so this really does cover a wide variety of sections of the zoning ordinance. It's really intended to address some of those master plan, uh, implementation steps to improve and streamline our review process and how we handle enforcement and administration of the ordinance. Uh, so we're looking at a variety of ma, minor administrative and enforcement clarifications to the definitions, uh, references to other ordinances and regulations that have been updated or are, were out of date, uh, some dimensional requirement clarifications and some additional updates to our sign section. Uh, as you may recall, we did a relatively comprehensive overview of the sign, uh, ordinance a couple of years ago after a Supreme Court decision came forth that, uh, had to deal with, uh, content-based regulations. We had, uh, a pretty fair number of amendments we made a couple of years ago on that, but this is further clarification on some of the sections there. Uh, we've also taken this opportunity to completely update our home occupation requirements. Uh, in particular, uh, this is probably driven by the number of firearm-related home occupations that the planning board had seen over the last couple of years, uh, basically making sure that it's clear in the ordinance what ones need to go to the planning board and which do not, because there were certain firearm-related, uh, home occupations that typically would not require planning board approval and they were able to be approved administratively and we didn't think that was the proper way of going about that. Uh, probably to Councilor Boyd's, uh, favorite section is the complete update and revision to our telecommunication, telecommunications tower regulations. I know that's been a consistent goal of the council in your annual, uh, goal-setting sessions and then updating the, uh, state building code references to make sure that we're up to date with the current state building code. Uh, we're really looking at, I think, six different sections. Uh, in section one, we're making clarifications to, in additions to various definitions. Section two, again, we're making some various clarifications and additions, that home occupation update and rewrite and the telecommunications tower update. Uh, section three is again making various clarifications in reference to the new site plan regulations that the planning board adopted in September last year. And then lastly, the final three sections, in section four, we're clarifying, uh, where travel trailers can be stored in mobile home parks, given the relative small size of those lots and the impact that having, uh, large travel trailers have in those areas. Uh, section eleven is the building code reference. Uh, that was primarily put together by the building division and the fire department staff. And lastly, section seventeen, which is the sign ordinance, it's various clarifications intended to clean up and clarify, uh, the expectations on both the public's part, the sign, uh, industry's part and our enforcement, uh, capabilities. Uh, we're not looking at doing anything significant from a policy standpoint, other than I think the biggest change, uh, when I go through the public hearing in December will be with the telecommunications tower section, we're taking, uh, part of the responsibility that currently rests with the zoning board of adjustment and changing that to a conditional use permit process with the planning board, uh, because I've found in my career that, uh, the types of issues generally relating to wireless communications towers are better handled by a planning board because they have more tools in their arsenal than the, than the zoning board does in terms of that approval process, so. Uh, also, there's been a lot of change, both on the federal and state level, as to what we can and can't do in terms of regulation of cell towers, so it just made sense to try to get that all in one place, uh, rather than sending certain applicants to do separate boards. Uh, that really is the brief and the simple overview as to what we're looking to do, uh, with the zoning ordinance. Uh, it is about seventy pages worth of, uh, items, as you find in your packet, because there's a lot of strikeouts and changes, but, uh, I think all in all, it's a pretty straightforward set of, uh, changes that we're looking to do. And again, I think this accomplishes several of the goals that we set forth in the master plan to try to improve and streamline our review process wherever it's, uh, makes sense to do so. So, uh, at this point, I welcome any questions on the broad overview, but I'll definitely get into more detail, uh, in December. And I do have a request that if the council was willing, uh, to not schedule the public hearing on December third, but rather the seventeenth, uh, I would be remiss if I spend my birthday at a council meeting. My wife would not really appreciate that so much, so, uh, the extra two weeks would be greatly appreciated if I could get that.
It's the day after my birthday, so that's a good reason to miss it too. Any other, any other que, any questions, um, or comments from the council? Lon?
Can we question content tonight?
You can, I think. Sure, Tim is here.
The stupidest question is the one you don't ask, something like that.
There you go.
Uh, page, or rather, section two, page forty-four. And I think I'm trying to educate myself.
Okay, you need to have your mic.
I'll educate myself with the button. Uh, number three, uh, Tim, um, that's section A, the, the fourth line, it, it talks about, installing an existing structure, blah, 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 reviewed for conformance, applicable building permit requirements, but shall not, uh, otherwise be subject public hearing.
That is state law now. That is state law now. Unless you are expanding the height of a tower by twenty, uh, feet or expanding it, it's a ten percent rule, in those situations, state law prohibits communities from requiring site plan and public hearings on those.
Right. My question is, shall it otherwise be subject to public hearing? Or am I not understanding the way they write state regulation?
That sentence essentially states that you're going to be reviewed by the administrative staff of the building department and the community development department to ensure that require, it applies with our applicable setback requirements and everything else, but we cannot otherwise require a public hearing on that unless it increases in height by more than twenty feet.
Otherwise be subject.
Should it be subjected to or subject to?
Not just subject public.
It should be subject to. Yep, there's a, there's a missing word there.
Okay. Thank you.
You read that pretty darn carefully, Lon, I, I have to admit.
Blame it on COVID, I don't have.
Blame it on two planning board hearings and three of my staff members missing that seventy times.
I can't say I read it that carefully.
That's one of those things you read through. I got the page, uh, section three, page ten, and I gave up. I, I folded the page over and said, I'll pick it up later, it was killing me.
Yeah, I do plan on doing a detailed, section by section review at the public hearing so that those members of the public who are in, in attendance and the council can get a feel for how we're, we're hoping to do this.
What, what is snipped, by the way, at the end of the pages?
Just means that I, you've noticed that when it says snip, it skips a bunch of pages. It means I've not included the entirety of that section of the ordinance. I've skipped those pages to cut down on the number of trees.
I didn't notice that. I didn't notice that, actually, but I appreciate that, now it makes sense.
So you're planning to go through all of this at the public hearing? Do we need to schedule a special six-hour meeting, or?
I don't think so. The first public hearing with the planning board bill, what, was about an hour?
Hour, and then the second meeting.
Fifteen, 20 minutes.
I mean, Nelson had questions, Bob had questions, I had questions, but I think, I think the planning board.
Was very thorough.
I was going to use different language, but I think that's a good one. I was, I was just.
I had anticipated approximately an hour.
Yeah, I think, I think, I think my colleagues on the planning board did a, did a very thorough and complete job. I think, you know, Chairman Best and former Chairman Disco, I think, really, you know, asked specific questions. I think they got into some parsing of words, and I think that's important, as alluded to by, by Counselor Woods. You know, I think, you know, language is important, so, but all that being said, yeah, I think they did a, I think we did a very good job on the document.
Okay.
But we had a good director that presented it to us, so it makes, makes our job a little bit easier.
Substantially easier.
Substantially easier, absolutely.
I did, before the council made a motion, I do, I was watching when Chairman Kanescu of the zoning board was in front of you earlier tonight, and I had a quick text exchange with Paul about whether or not I should come up at that point or address that when I came up here tonight. But in reference to the virtual meetings that the planning and zoning board continues to have, that's been a decision of my doing for purposes of the fact that we have several, both members and staff members that have either their own risk factors or family members with risk factors. So I've made the decision that until otherwise directed by the town manager, we would remain in a virtual environment for those two boards. Likewise, I know Chairman Kanescu lamented the public input and public participation. I'll be honest with you, I've found that we've gotten more public input in general for our land use board meetings since we went remote because people have an easier time picking up the phone and dialing in to provide their comments than it is to come into the meetings. I, I've found that we've had probably a good 20% to 25% more public input since we went to remote meetings than we were getting in in-person meetings.
So he lamented somewhat that he doesn't get as much positive feedback as he used to, and I don't know if you've noticed that or not.
I'll be honest with you, the, the amount of positive feedback at zoning board meetings in particular, in my 24 years of doing this, is slim to none for any of those meetings. It's just not the nature of that board.
Okay. Well, we, I think we all figured that it, the reasoning was, was concern about health of individual staff or members. So if it, if it makes sense, then.
I have one of my staff members that currently works remotely two to three times per week due to childcare issues because of those typical issues with hybrid schooling and his daughter's schooling. I have a child with a disability, so the, the amount of public time spent in meetings with exposure, I've been very careful to limit, and I remain firm on that. That's also one of the reasons why I chose not to come up and sit here through the entire meeting and wait in my office, so watch my TV until time to come up.
Certainly respect that, and thank you for, for being able to show up. I, I thought it was convenient that you were able to.
I had it on my TV the entire time.
Just the time.
My last thing, again, before motion, since we're in the mood of announcing board vacancies, I have two vacant alternate positions and a vacant full-member position on the planning board as well. So we are in desperate need of volunteers for our land use boards currently. Between the zoning board and the planning board, we have five vacant positions right now.
Okay.
Please, if you know people.
We had planning board opening, so thank you for bringing that up. And those are both great boards to be on, especially if you want to know what's going on in the town. And they, but the planning board meets twice a month.
Correct.
And gets plenty of backend information and support from your department to be well aware of what's going on. So we're looking for a motion to move these changes to a public hearing.
December 17.
On December 17.
Correct.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
For some length of time. So a motion made by Bill and seconded by Barbara to move the zoning ordinance amendments, changes to a public hearing on December 17. Any other comments from the council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? Nancy had told me that she was going to look through this and give me any feedback that she had. I got nothing from her, so I think you're doing a great job. Thank you very much for your efforts.
And in reference to the face mask, I apologize for wearing competing high schools logo, but it is my alma mater, and my kids do go there, and the school board instructional committee there last night did vote to allow winter sports to take place for Concord schools. So we're hopeful that that final decision will be made, and my kids will have a wrestling season this year.
Awesome.
Very good. Thank you very much, and I don't.
Tim, thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Boy, Paul, you got them all trained up here, huh? Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
No, I didn't catch it. Okay, well, we save the best for last on our agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I come before you to discuss, I know it's a little late, but it seems like COVID has pushed several things, delayed several things coming forward and trying to work through meetings and stuff, but tonight I'm coming before you to talk about the 2021, 22 budget and try to give the council a little bit of heads up. We've talked about a public hearing on the 17th. Want to also say that that would be the night that we will present the budget to the town council. So in looking at that, I'll make sure that that's kind of a lighter meeting than, than normal on the agenda. So December 3rd might be a little bit heavier for, for the council because of those reasons. And, and you know, if that's the case, on February, February, I don't want to spend Valentine's Day. But going back to the budget, it's, it's, this year has been a little more difficult than, than years past. Coming in front of the council, myself and town manager Cabanel have went over this and looked at this. We have some increases that are, are state mandates. We have other increases for GMRs that, that have been handed down from some of our insurance companies and things of that sort. Next year, we have six unions that are still in contract, so you'll see those costs as well. So there, there are some costs coming through the budget that, that are here. To tap off a perfect storm, you'll see, is that there's also a 53rd week of payroll. So, but I, I do have some ideas for, for the council to, to go forward, so, and, and look at these things. First thing is, my slides are all messed up for some reason with this, as you go, and I want to apologize because they were fine down on my laptop. It must be some communications with, with this new laptop here. I want to review the tax rate, and what I told you earlier in the meeting, we're at $24.06. It's a seven-cent decrease, and it's made up of, you know, the municipality's at $5.06. That's what we said we were going to be at when we presented last year for the 2020 budget. It was $5.06, and we did hit that as we went forward, and we knew that there was going to be an increase to the budget last year of 35 cents. The school decreased by 35 cents this year. They, they had some return of surplus due to, due to COVID and things of that sort, and some money they got, so they were able to decrease their tax rate. School, state as well decreased a little bit, and then the county decreased. And the reason why the county decreased was because our valuation went up almost $92 million. And that's why the school, state, and the, and the county kind of decreased in, in those realms with, with the tax rate. And as I said, we're at $24.06. The bills will be bailed on Monday. They'll be due the Monday after Christmas, the 28th of December. For the people who come in and pay their bills, we talked a little bit about this, a public service announcement, they'll be going to finance because of the lines and the express window to get people paying tax bills in and out of the buildings quicker. We'll do what we did in, in the May timeframe where they came into finance for these tax bills. They'll come back into finance and present, we take check only in finance, we cannot take credit card, and we do not take cash, it's just checks that we'll be taking in the finance for the tax bills. So with that being said, what we know is our health insurance is going up 2.8%. That's a very good GMR. The changes that we put in place in our health insurance going to deductibles, 1,000, 3,000 has, we're starting to see some dividends on that. Some health insurances from other municipalities were going up 9%, 10%. The school itself, not the school, the library, which is in a different health insurance pool from us, was, was a 9% increase. So in the, in the pool they were at. Increase in property liability, 7%. Workers' comp, we're starting to see some settling back down on the workers' comp to, to 8.9%. That was, if you remember, a couple of years ago, we were at 11% or higher, double digits. So we're starting to see some of the, the work of workers' comp, we're starting to come back down because some of the, even though we do have, still have claims, some of the, some of the bigger claims are working off the moving average for the prime XR vendor. Like I said, we have six union contracts that have a 2% wage adjustment. There is no non-union wage increase in the budget right now. That's something that we'll have to discuss. 53rd week of payroll. We also discussed trying to get a SAFER grant for four new firefighters. If we didn't get that SAFER grant, which we did not get, that we were going to include four new firefighters in, in the budget. And there are some staffing additions, staffing additions in last year's budget from 2020 that we did part-year, that are going full-year. There was a police officer that we did a part-year on, and there was the foreman down at the, for stormwater at Highway that we did part-year on. So those will have to pick up the extra half-year that we had there. In addition, there are other staffing adjustments. Well, we talked in one of our retreats about a part-time conservation officer. That's included, and then some part-time general government office help that has also been talked about. And we're still working out the final, what that's finally going to look like, but when we bring the budget forward in December, we'll know what, what it's going to look like. We know the hours, we know the amount, we just don't know what the final position's going to look like, whether that's going to be helping out human resources, or is that going to be taking over some of the other responsibilities like, like we have the, the report, yearly report that we have to do, and other things that, to free up one of the full-time members to help out human resources, to give human resources a little more help. Increase in capital reserve deposits. We know we're going to have a decrease in state revenues because we had that two-year revenue from the state that was a bonus, that kind of spent down the state surplus, and they gave it to us, and it was about $200,000. There's an increase in some administrative fees in revenues throughout the town, and the administrative fees and revenues are financed for some of the special revenue funds and some of the enterprise funds that we have. We perform all their accounting services, and, and we perform their legal and things of that sort. So there's an administrative fee that goes along with those that have increased because of things. And then the big elephant in the room that was passed down to us as an unfunded mandate is an increase to New Hampshire retirement. And the increases into New Hampshire retirement are significant. For employees of a political subdivision, that's all your DPW workers, your town clerk, task class, general government, all those kind of positions, we're going up 25.87%. The rate's going up to 14.06% from 11.17%. Police officers are going from 28.4% up to 33.88%, or almost a 19%, a little over a 19% increase. And then firefighters are going up 32.99% from 30.09%, or 6.35. And I just want to reiterate that. So for every dollar we spend in police, fire, and employees, for employees, we're basically paying, for every dollar, we're paying 14 cents. It's in the New Hampshire retirement system. For police, we're paying 30, almost 34 cents for every dollar we spend in salaries. And for fire, we're paying 33 cents for every dollar we spend in, in salaries for that. And those are significant jumps. Police is about $200,000. Fire's about $100,000, and the employees are about $200,000. So it's almost a half a million dollars unfunded mandate that we have going forward, just in New Hampshire retirement.
If it's an unfunded mandate, Paul, which I think it is, but how, why are we paying it?
We have to.
It's unconstitutional.
Yeah, but those are the rates because we belong to the retirement system, and the retirement system board sets the rates, and they get approved, and they get passed down to us. So if we don't pay them, then we get, we're not in, we're not in coherence, compliance with the law.
Somebody should have gone to jail for that.
So.
So this is sinful, I mean, that's just offensive to me.
So, natural gas, I, I signed an agreement, a long-term contract that will come due December 2022. So we shouldn't see an increase in natural gas. It's only based on the amount of therms we use. It's about seven cents per therm that we use. Electrical rates, once again, we signed a long-term contract that's about seven cents per electrical rate. One thing, so we're not going to see an increase, but we will see a decrease. We'll see a decrease because, as you know, and I meant to mention this earlier, is we completed our LED lighting project. And with that LED lighting project, we put sensors in the rooms. So every office has a sensor now. So it's got, after so many, after seven minutes, the lights dim down to 20%. After 10 minutes, if there's no activity, the light shut off. So we are, we're working on it, we're working through it because some of the hallways, it does that, and I'm going to age myself here, but it's like Get Smart. Remember when he used to walk through, for those people who remember Get Smart, he used to walk through? And that's what it's like walking down the hall sometimes, is the lights come on as you walk down the hall. So we're, we're still tinkering with it to, to make it. Our office hours are from 8:30 to 4:30. We're here, if it's dark, just open up the door and take a step in. Usually the sensor lights will kick on, and, but we are here. So we're, we're tinkering with some of the hallways so that it doesn't shut all the way off. It just might lower down to 30% instead of shutting all the way off for, for those extra times. And then solid waste disposal, we know we're going to have an increase in tipping fees because our contract ends December 2021, and we know that right now, the reci, we got to figure out what we're going to be doing with the recycling market. In January, myself and town manager Cabanel have talked about trying to negotiate a contract with our, our current provider of, that we, that we use to see if we can get kind of a long-term. But for the last couple of negotiations that we started, the first year has been a non-negotiable. This is the new rate, starting year one, and then we'll talk after that. So there could be a significant increase from what we're at, $6 per ton increase, give or take, going forward. So it, it could be sizable on, you know, eight, you know, $60,000 or so, which is, we've been, $8,000 a year for the contract. We had, we had a very good contract, so we're still working on trying to get them down off of that first year, but those things, well, hopefully we'll get one going forward that will be more reasonable. What we have pending is state revenues, rooms and meals. As you know, COVID has affected the rooms and meals throughout, and they're going to seem to affect it even more. I heard today that we might get a vaccination at the end of December, starting with some first responder hospital workers, and maybe some long-term care facilities. Probably maybe April, May, June, if you listen to, to what reports are, is that maybe the vaccination, vaccine will be given out for all other, all other people. So right now, rooms and meals has been hurting. So we, we don't know what those numbers are going to be looking like next year. So we we don't know what those numbers are gonna be looking like next year, we're hoping that at least the governor will flatline them. Um or the or the, in the budget process. Uh highway block grants, another one, that goes with gas tax. And if people aren't driving, they're not getting the gas tax, so the highway block grant might be less. Uh use of fund balance um is is uh something I wanna talk to you a little bit about. And then, as I said before, the solid waste disposal and tipping fees. So. As as I mentioned, the tax rate is five dollars and six cents. Our health insurance increase is about seventy one thousand dollars or about two cents on a tax rate. Property liability is about seventeen thousand dollars, it's roughly a little more than than three quarters of a penny, so I put it in for a penny. Uh workers' comp is is twenty eight thousand dollars, once again, it's a penny. Uh for new firefighters, I net, remember last year, we gave a bunch of overtime to the firefighters to make sure that they're always at ten. Well, with four new firefighters, they will be at ten. So we can kind of reduce some of that overtime number. So I'm estimating about three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars for those four new firefighters, and that's about ten cents on the tax rate. Full year costing of the staff was about eighty-five thousand dollars for those two positions I was talking about. And and it's not all salaries, these are all fully loaded costs in in personnel, which fully loaded means is that includes retirement, includes uh health insurance, life insurance, all the insurances, so it's eighty-five thousand dollars or two cents. Some of the other staffing changes, those two part-time positions are seventy-two thousand dollars or two cents. New Hampshire retirement's four hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars or about fourteen cents on the tax rate. The six union contracts are two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars or eight cents. The fifty-third week of payroll is three hundred and two thousand dollars, and that's just for the general fund, and that's about nine cents. And I wanna come back to that because that happens every four or five years. And I I think I have a solution if if the council's willing to listen um to it and 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 move forward. But I I think I kind of have a workaround to help offset that. Um capital reserve fund deposits, we're looking right now about a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. I am definitely, in December third, you'll be getting the capital reserves, the C I P will be presenting that in front of the council. I'm thinking that that number could be a little bit high, but right now, that's five cents. Um thinking of what I could push around and push out and what, and talking to departments to see if we can make, do what we have and and push some stuff out to a little bit longer to help smooth that out a little bit. Like I said, natural gas is zero. Solid waste recycling, I'm estimating about twenty thousand dollars, that's just to get that extra three months that we had up to where we were. And that's flatlining the fee going forward right now because we're still looking and talking to about recycling. Solid waste tipping, about thirty-two thousand dollars or one cent. Uh compensated absences will decrease this year by twenty-five thousand dollars or decrease a penny. The decrease in revenues from the state was two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, and that's an increase on the tax rate of about six cents. Because we're losing revenues, so tax rate will go up. And then the increase in admin revenues is about forty-five thousand dollars or a decrease of a penny. Effect on the tax rate, if you add all those up, are about fifty-nine cents. Um I'd like to talk to you about the uh the the payroll, the fifty-third week of payroll now. Um since this year, we we did quite well with our COVID money. So we're gonna have a surplus with COVID money. I'm gonna have a surplus with um with uh health insurance rebate. Uh premium rebates that I got from some insurance companies um for health insurance, dental, things of that sort. Um we were fortunate enough that when I came in in September to set the uh revenues, we were able to bring down some of the revenues that I thought were, we weren't gonna hit, that were in the budget. So the count, we were able to get those closer to where they'd be. So what I am projecting is that we're gonna have some fund balance moving forward, at least on the revenue side, that's gonna go into fund balance. Fifty-third week of payroll is is a one-time cost, and that's nine cents. So if we if we didn't have anything, you'd see a spike of nine cents next year, and then the following year, you'll see a drop of nine cents. Only to even that spiking up and down with the fifty-third week of payroll would be, I'd recommend that we use fund balance to cover that. Um and that would be on top of the one point five million dollars that we set aside for fund balance this year. So that'd be an additional three hundred and two thousand dollars or three hundred and three thousand dollars of fund balance. So the fund balance number coming forward in front of the council would be one point eight million dollars of a use of fund balance. We have a very healthy fund balance. Um the 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 Tata Merrimack's financial condition is in very good shape. Um we were able to weather the storm um at the beginning of uh of COVID. And uh as you can, as you know, a lot of communities are out there and because our tax rate, we're used to getting our money early in December. And a lot of communities are same way, but they have to go out there and borrow money to cover that six, three to four-week lag until they get the money. Town of Merrimack, right now, I do not see us needing to borrow money and we'll still be able to hit all our obligations on time. Um because we do have a healthy fund balance and and things of that sort. The extra three hundred thousand dollars, I forgot to also mention that uh, um you know, we got seventy-two thousand dollars for COVID relief for t- for uh for the uh elections. We got over six hundred thousand dollars for COVID for for when we uh, from the state. The majority of that was in this year that we got reimbursed. We have FEMA money that's gonna be a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty thousand dollars of revenue that's coming in this year. Yes, we do have some expenses, but the majority of that is revenue to help offset those expenses a- and things of that sort. So we we will get, see, I think revenues, and you'll see this when I when I start looking at the revenues, maybe not in the first quarter, but when I do it for the sixth month in in January, that our our revenues are coming in and that I believe we will be able to to weather the storm in the revenue realm. That's why I'm projecting the use of fund balance for this and so that if you use the fund balance, it's a one-time hit. So that you're not gonna get that spike in nine cents and then that decrease the next year in nine cents. It would be like it never happened on the tax rate. You just reduce your fund balance by the three hundred and two thousand dollars. And like I said, we we do have a healthy fund balance, I believe our fund balance is pretty close to eight percent or still over eight percent when all is said and done this year. Um I do have significant salary savings as well that I know of right away. I have four vacancies in my police department. I have assistant chief in my fire department that's been vacant now for four or five months. Um so I know that I'm gonna get some salary savings as we come forward too wi- with that to to help out. Um as well as other salary savings that that have come from uh from other people being out on workers' comp or short-term disability and things of that sort. And other vacancies throughout the town, we we still haven't hired the um, in the process of, but we still haven't hired the engineer, environmental engineer. And you know, so I'll have some salary savings there um and things of that sort. So I believe that we'll definitely have some salary savings on the back end. But that would be my recommendation, and if we take that, if you take that recommendation and we take out the three hundred and two thousand dollars out of this, we're at fifty cents right now is the estimate of an increase in tax. And that's just looking at it from from these numbers. Um you know, we're talking to the fire department and and the fire chief on the four firefighters and saying realistically, when do you think they're gonna be here and working? Is if, is it, can it be July first? Because if it can be July first, then we'll leave them in. But if it's not gonna be July first and it's gonna be September first to August first, that one month of savings is is a savings. And that could be a penny or two on the tax rate. So we're looking at all these other avenues to try to try to reduce this this fifty-nine cents or fifty cents. If you 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 think that it's a good idea to use the fund balance for that fifty-third week of payroll.
Didn't didn't we do that last?
Last time, that's what we did last time too.
I thought I recalled that, so I'm I'm on board.
Yeah, we did do that last time. I just can't make that assumption.
I think if we have the room to do that, it's a good idea.
Yeah.
I'm on board, yeah.
Yeah, and I think we do have the room to do that. Um so I'm sorry to be the bearer of bad news, uh but uh that's what it's looking like and and we we have looked at these numbers, s- you know, drastically, looked at them over and over again to see where potentially we can save some money. If if we know people are retiring and things of that sort, we already looked at, you know, that and the budget as well. Um and we're just really starting our review of where we're we're at. So these are, like I said, if I if I C R Fs, if I take that down off seventy-five thousand dollars, there's two more cents. So now we're down a forty-eight cents or so, plus or minus. You know, so there is, there's some things we're looking at to to go and Eileen and Eileen and myself, we 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 do not take, you know, showing a fifty cent increase like whole hum, we we are looking at every avenue to try to get that as low as possible. But there are some costs that we can't avoid, you know, New Hampshire.
G M Rs and N T Es, you think those are pretty accurate numbers or is there a chance that?
They they will not go above that.
Well, I know that.
Um I think they're, we're gonna be right on them for the most part. I think we're gonna be right on them for the most part, especially the health insurance. I don't foresee us saving, you know, the one thing with the health insurance is also mix.
Three percent, yeah.
Yeah, it's also the mix. So the G M R might be three percent, but what is our mix doing? And when I talk about mix is the town of Merrimack, we budget for an average health insurance cost. So you know, we take all our singles, all our two-person, all our family plans. We crunch the numbers through, if if people take the incentive, we take that into account and we come up with an average health insurance cost per individual. So if our mix changes from a bunch of single plans to a bunch of family plans, then the cost goes up more than the two point eight percent. But what I'm seeing through November is that we're pretty much gonna be as close to the two point eight percent right now with our mix. Our mix is coming in right where it needs to be in my projections, to be at around the two point eight or maybe a little bit lower, so.
Okay. Any other questions, recommendations, suggestions?
Is there anything that?
Find find a hundred thousand somewhere.
Barbara.
Yeah, um the new positions that are being proposed.
Right.
Can we see the job descriptions?
You you went s- once.
When they're proposed, as well as can they be staggered hiring, can they be part-timers?
Oh, actually, the two positions that we're looking to bring on are both part-timers, conservation officer and the help in general government are both time, part-time. I believe I budgeted one for twenty hours and one for twenty-five hours. But yeah, once we get down that road, when we come forward, yeah, we'll we'll let you know what, because they're both brand-new positions. It isn't like there's another position that we've done.
And also, is there such a thing as a fund balance for, since we know we get a an an extra week every four years? Is there such a thing as a fund balance that we can put into every year to offset that? I mean, not a fund balance, but C R F?
You could bring forward a a, not a C R F, but a capital.
Know what I mean?
Yes, you can do something forward to put money aside for that. Um it would be an expendable trust, it would be like the milfoil.
Okay.
Something of that sort, if you wanna do that, and and you could fund it that way. It's every four or five years, it it all depends on how the the calendar plays out with June thirtieth and leap years and and things of that sort. You know, I think um we try to push it as much as possible, but when, you know, June thirtieth starts getting Thursday and Friday, it's it's kinda hard to say the the pay period ended a week before that, you know, because then it just starts pushing it back and back. So that's why I'm trying to get caught up with the fifty-third week. And like I said, it's kind of the perfect storm to be bringing that forward with, to the council this year is with the fifty-third week. When I saw that, I was like, oh, what else?
What else?
What else, you know?
We don't need anything else.
No, we, yeah, right, exactly, exactly, but. So.
Okay.
Uh is there anything else the council may wanna see brought forward, looked at during during the budget?
You talked about the the vacancies at the police department. I guess I'd like to have a breakdown by department vacancies that we have at the, in all the departments right now.
Yeah.
That would be one thing that I wanna see. The other thing, and this is just me speaking, um and I've I've bro- broached this subject before, but I mean, do we now begin to look at maybe privatizing some services? I'm not saying that it's feasible, I'm just saying is there potential for any efficiencies by looking to 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 privatize? It may not be in this budget, but you know, I mean, here we are, we're, you know, we've already talked, we're talking about tipping fees again. We're talking about, you know, our providers already saying, you know, our contract ends on December, uh December of twenty twenty-one. And you've already been read the riot act of twenty twenty-two, this is good, the rates could be at a delta of X, it's it's non-negotiable. So I really think there needs to be a a larger conversation of where we're going as it relates to our our solid waste program here in here in town. So I think with you and and Eileen, that I think I'd like to see some some thought on 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 the future of that. And I appreciate the work that um that Director Fox had done, bringing the uh the N H R R A here to, you know, and I think they gave us, you know, quite honestly, some great anecdotes on what the future of the industry is over the, um at the time that they talked to us, which was about eighteen months ago. I think they really set the tone for for preparing us that we may actually be getting to having that particular policy discussion. So I I guess I'd like to see some some thought on on feasibility and whether it's something that the that the community can sustain. I know my colleagues will probably have difference, difference, different ideas, maybe some differences of opinion, but I think the conversation needs to be had.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh one other thing is that uh ask all departments to look at revenues. You know, I know we're gonna talk a little bit about some tipping fees because we know they're going up. So that's one conversation we're gonna have um with tipping fees, um things of that sort. So looking at some of the other revenues, building permits, things of that sort. Are we are we in line with what it's, what other communities are are charging and and things of that sort? Um we're trying, like I said, the, we're trying to do some of these things with, on our bigger buildings with electricity and things of that sort to now, the LEDs are more affordable to put in, and the payback period's a lot quicker. So you know, we're looking at things of that sort i- in some of the buildings as well as uh efficiencies with natural gas, which we've already done in a lot of the buildings, so.
Okay.
So I went to town hall on Sunday and I went in to turn on the light and I walked in the door and the light automatically came on. I'm like, okay, that was, that was pretty cool.
Yeah.
So I I was impressed with that.
Yes, I noticed that recently as well, but. Any other questions or comments on the budget? Paul, I know you got a lot of work ahead of you and thank you very much for for getting into that. I I think the only comment we can have is that anything you can do to try and find another penny here or there would be greatly appreciated by everybody. We've been trying forever to keep our budgets down and generally, we've done it. But there are times like this where the New Hampshire retirement for a half million and four firefighters, it's it's just a chunk we have to go for. Um between that and a couple of things, we hit a million dollars extra and it's it's really difficult to just absorb that into a a budget. But uh we'll we'll be looking at everything we can to try and find ways to keep it as slim as we can get it. And I appreciate your help in in leading that charge.
Well, thank you. I I do wanna mention one last thing that is sort of related, but it's more related to the tax rate. Is that in twenty twenty-one, like I said, it's the perfect storm, we're doing a revaluation as well. So we're gonna get out, and I already talked to Lauren, and I talked to her and I said, we gotta get out in front of this. You gotta go in front of the council because it's capital reserve that we have set aside for that. Gotta go in front of them, get approval for the, for your contract, the amount of money, and we need to do a TV show. And we need to start educating the, educating the people in January, February, March, what this is and what are you doing and what does this mean? And get out in front of them because I don't know what COVID's gonna be like come the summer month.
Come next April or whatever.
Next April or May or June. So we gotta get out in front and and do this thing and and do the TV show where Nicholas can do a Facebook Live, like he's done with the police about other things and and things of that sort. So it's just one more thing that I wanna let the council aware of is that, yes, you'll be coming front. And like I said, it's becoming the perfect storm with with a lot of different things coming through with this and and, you know. We will try our best to get this tax rate as close as we can.
As Yoda says, there is no try, Paul.
Yes.
Just do it. Um, okay. That brings us to, if there's no other comments, brings us to minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I would move the Thursday, October twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty, town council. Mr. Chairman, I would move the Thursday, October 29th, 2020 town council meeting minutes with the following modification. Page six, line 50, motion made by Vice Chair Boyd and seconded by blank to accept.
Okay.
And that's, that's all I had and.
Are you promoting blank to being a member of the council?
I have no idea who seconded the motion. That's the whole thing, so we would need to research that. Uh, page six, line 50.
At the very bottom.
The very bottom.
I don't recall who did that either. Maybe it was Nancy or Peter.
Yep, okay.
Okay.
And Council Healy?
Well, that's the one I had and also I'm, I didn't see a time when the meeting adjourned.
That's important.
Okay. Is that it? Anybody else have any other corrections, changes, additions, deletions? I'd like to say I had that one too, but. I don't have anything else to add at this point.
Needs a second, Mr. Chairman.
Seeing none, we need a second for the motion to accept, seconded by Barbara. Motion made by Bill and seconded by Barbara to accept a minutes with corrections as outlined for Thursday, October 29th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed or abstaining? That passes 500. Comments from the press, not here, comments from the public? Charles, just for the record, could you?
Oh, Charles LaFond, Seven Linden Way, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Uh, I just have a few things. One is, uh, I, I, I just wanna make sure, I, I volunteered for a long-term trial for a, a COVID vaccine.
Oh.
And I actually put the information up on, uh, one of the forum sites so that if anyone in town wants to sign up for a long-term study, they can. One of the advantages to it is they pay you a hundred dollars and they require five, uh, visits over the course of two years and they pay you a hundred dollars per visit. And they also take extremely good care of you while you're in the program. They do blood tests on you and they check your antibodies and they check the effects of the vaccine and they check to see the life of the vaccine over, uh, the trial period, which is two years. So if anyone is a little leery of it or anything like that, understand that this is probably the best you get. And, uh, later on, when you get the vaccine, you, you probably won't get that kind of treatment. You're probably just gonna get a shot. So if anybody is, I, I was very nervous because I have a lot of, uh, existing conditions in me. I've, I've, I've got some things. So I, I was really glad to see that. I, I sat at home terrified most of the time because I didn't wanna get COVID. I, I had MERS a few years ago. Let me tell you, that put religion in me. Unfortunately, my phone just went. One thing I, I used to come to meetings quite a bit back when this was a selectman forum. And they used to be very rowdy and I, I get it, a lot of times things didn't get done because they got a little too rowdy and maybe a little too, uh, personal. But I'll tell you, I've been to some of these and sitting here and having to wait when you hear something and you wanna just strike one thing in there, not slow it down, but just strike one thing in there. Like for instance, one thing between this board and the planning board, a lot of stuff seems to come out of the blue that I don't know. You guys are working on stuff for a long time, maybe. I miss some of those meetings. Trust me, I tape almost everything and I analyze almost everything, but I miss. And you guys may get stuff outside of here in your six o'clock meeting maybe. All I'm saying is, is that, is that at home, I try to follow along and I can't. The most frustrating committee is the planning board. It seems like almost everything they did got done back in 2014. They're wheeling out plans. Do, do you guys update the plans if you do them in 2014? It's 2020, it's six years later. Codes change, requirements change. I just heard, I, I bought an electric car. In five years, they said 30% of the cars on the road are gonna be electric. Really? Are we putting electric outlets in garages? Cause right now I'm, I'm trying to hire an electrician and that's almost impossible. And I need to see a brand-new house be put in where, where, where a guy's gonna be moving in probably with an electric car. Or if not, he's gonna be buying one within a few months or a year. Same thing over at the apartments. I don't know what you're gonna do. 30% of the car's gonna be electric. I don't know. They're talking about a lot of electric cars. I mean, the one that I got was cheap. And, and I'll go even further than that, but it's like, it'd be nice if we all got, got along and got these together. So anyways, I, I wanted to ask that guy if, if they did any of that, but. They did do that? Okay, good. Cause they scare me. They do scare me. I know you're over there, but they scare me. Oh, good, it came back. So anyways, you know, cause many years ago, we had problems with the codes. I bought my house in 92, we weren't observing the National Electric Code. Every one of my bathrooms is wired together. My garage has issues, okay? It's, it's like every outside outlet in my garage is tied together. Every time I get a contractor over to do a job, they have to run a generator. So anyways, I've been fixing a lot of electrical issues at my house and it was built in 92. And I know it, it's better now, but like I said, the 2014 projects, I hope they've been updated and I hope they're being updated as they build them now. So like I said, a lot of things seem to be going in the background. We need to, to get better ways to get that information out to the people, especially the planning board. I shouldn't have to guess what's going on in this town. I shouldn't have to figure it out. I shouldn't have to see when they start doing construction. And half the time, that's what it is because sometimes they, they talk about this stuff two or three years ago. Maybe I was working back then, maybe I was in India, you know? Today I'm here, I'm like, what the heck is that? And I don't know. So I, I don't wanna make people feel uncomfortable, but I'll tell you, in 1982, or a little early in that, about 1980, in Utah, they made a change to all the two bedrooms. They had to go to one and a half bath. And you say to yourself, Charlie, that's kinda stupid. That's not a big deal. One and a half bath? What the heck is that? Two-bedroom, one and a half bath, so what? When you have kids, I had two girls and me and my wife in my house. And you know what it's like trying to get everybody ready first thing in the morning? I'm going to work, my wife's going to work, two kids are going to school. You got one bathroom. Good luck. The last thing is the Madeline Bennett, you guys accepted. I really have a problem with that. When that road was built, it had issues. It had so many issues. They basically started school over there with huge mounds of dirt over by the intersection. So you couldn't even see kids coming out of the school. So they basically didn't let anybody walk home because it wasn't safe. And then they didn't bother doing an intersection out there because it was so far away from the school, they didn't have to because it was beyond the federal limit for, for doing a school intersection. But it's the only intersection for that school to empty. But like I said, they kept forcing the kids onto the bus. No kid was allowed to come in through the woods on motorized vehicles. No kid was allowed to do this, no kid was allowed to do that. There's no bike paths coming down that street. Even today, I thought from my notes of November 7th, a 2019 meeting, I'm gonna go home and pull the tape out on it, that in my notes, it said, and it, and I had a reminder to go out and check, make sure that they widened Madeline Bennett like they said they were gonna do, make sure that they took care of those bike paths and that sidewalk down that development, down, uh, Babustick Lake Road like they said they were gonna do, make sure that the intersection got widened into code like they said they were gonna do. And all of a sudden, I go over there and I'm like, well, no, they, they didn't really go down Madeline Bennett, did they? They just went up to this intersection and down to that road. And then they came cutting in this way and Madeline Bennett was never designed to be an access way to another neighborhood. And now you're gonna have another neighborhood dump in halfway down that road and that's gotta be a full-blown, federal-regulated school intersection with a guard monitor, everything else. I know the school's gonna have to pay, but you guys have gotta sort of think about that. And we just sort of like said, okay, yep, we'll take off. I'd like to see a list of what it is we have to fix. A, from what was done before and B, from what has to be done because that development just went in there. Okay? Because that wasn't part of the original plan. Many of us are still unhappy about that school going in where it went in because we felt it was too wet, too unstable, just, just too poor a decision. And then we, we all argue that you can't put fields back there. And sure enough, they put fields back there. And, you know, many of us argued that should have been an elementary school. I, I'm not gonna belabor the point anymore and like I said, I went much longer than I thought. But I'll send you a letter, um, outlining all of the things, but Madeline Bennett, that hurts. That, what they did over there hurts, cause I saw it from, from the very beginning. I begged them not to do that to us. I went to school board meetings, I went to town meetings, I went to all kinds of meetings. I got involved on community plans. Everything I did, nothing went the way I wanted it to. I'm not a sore loser, but I'm telling you, I think we could've done much better over there. Thank you, a- and just like, please, I, I beg of you. It's like, it's like sometimes you, I know you, some of the people you have in here, you have some very good people, maybe it's just me. But I would, I would bring up some more if you have people in here that are coming to the meeting for a reason. And, uh, if they have some input on something, just, I mean. Anyways, thank you for hearing me. Thank you all. Nice seeing you guys.
That last piece was bring in more seats or what? I didn't understand that last bit.
If you have, if you have citizens that feel so moved that they come to the meeting.
Yeah.
It's always good to grab their input. And, uh, you know, you grab it at this point and that point, but while you're in your, your, your basic deliberative session between you and the person sitting in that chair, sometimes you have people back here that have. And I know that we've all gotten accustomed to that and I still don't. I'll stand back there and wait. But anyways.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Have a good one. Comments from the council?
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone. You've all done very well.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Lon stole my line.
Anybody else? Any other comments? Seeing none?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Bill and seconded by Lon to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed or abstaining? That passes 700. Please turn off your mics.